All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. Copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal, Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Superintendent Wimmer, I'd ask if this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we recognize a quorum with all seven of our members present, six physically, and Tani Schmidt is attending via phone. So as a result, I will ask for all votes by roll call. So just a little reminder, and I would ask my fellow members to remind me in case I forget that point. So next is the approval of our agenda. It was presented, posted in advance. I would move to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Motion, second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? I will call the roll. Mr. Revholtz.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Rongert.
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. And Ms. Dove.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. We have an agenda. We're going to start tonight with recognition of Winter State Qualifiers. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Molly Hanks, East Athletic Director, is going to introduce East Wrestling. Good evening.
Good evening. We're really excited to be here. Obviously, we have a full house. I get to get things rolling here. I am going to introduce my head wrestling coach, Shane Pankowski, and he's going to talk a little bit more about Casey Gish.
Thank you for having us. So Casey qualified for the state tournament a few weeks ago, wrestling, and this is his first-time qualification. He's a junior. And Casey did an awesome job for us this year. We graduated nine seniors, so we were a young team, and Casey kind of took the bull by the horns, was an awesome captain for us, and then finished off the year with making it to state tournament. Going into the state tournament, Wisconsin Wrestling Online had him way down at 13th out of his bracket of 16, but Casey, you know, exceeded expectations. He finished third place. So he ended up going five and one at state tournament. He beat four guys who were, you know, ranked ahead of him and ended up third place, and we have another year left with him where he's going to go for that state title. So Casey, Casey did awesome this year.
And now for West Wrestling, Erin Felber is going to introduce. Good evening, Erin.
Hello. So I'm excited to be here. You'll see me a couple of times introducing a few of our coaches tonight, but first, we'll start with West Wrestling, and I want to congratulate all of you that are here for snowboarding, ski team, and wrestling. Making it to state is an incredible accomplishment, and we're, we're very, very proud of you. So let's hear from Coach Erin Spath.
All right, good evening. We'll do a lineup by weight, guys. We do this quite often. Something that they've heard before. Just want to say thank you for taking time out of your night to recognize not only the wrestlers, but all of the state qualifying athletes. They put a tremendous amount of time into their athletics, but also their academics. So these five individuals up in front of me are a part of West Bend West Wrestling history. For a long time, forever, the most we had ever qualified for the state wrestling tournament was three athletes. This year, we broke that trend, qualifying five athletes for the state tournament. So right there, really something to be proud of. The five athletes in front of me, I looked at their records, they had a total of 214 wins and only 35 losses as a combined total group of five. We'll start with the state qualifiers. Freshman Ethan Bast. Ethan finished the season with a 38 and 12 record. He is the highest winning, winningest freshman record, or freshman in state, or in West Bend West history. So Ethan Bast. His next athlete is Ben Bast. Ben finished with a 40 and 3 record and finished fourth in the state tournament. He is now a two-time Wisconsin State Placer. Next up, Carter Lovey. Carter's a junior. He finished with a 36 and 16 record, and also, he qualified for the state tournament for the first time, placed sixth in the state tournament. Then we have Connor Marisola. Connor Marisola finished with a 50 and 2 record and was the state champion at the 182-pound weight class. Not to be outdone by his brother, last athlete is Cole Marisola. He also finished the season with a 50 and 2 record and was the state champion at the 195, 95-pound weight class. A remarkable year. What's probably even more remarkable is that every single one of these athletes in front of you tonight is back next year. We look forward to building on this year's success, and I just want to give a quick shout-out to the board. Last fall, I came to you with a proposal for an out-of-state tournament. You granted that. We just want to say thank you for the approval, the travel outside of the state of Wisconsin to wrestle. It truly helped us prepare for that state tournament, so thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, state qualifiers.
And Erin, I think you're going to introduce members of the co-op ski team, is that correct?
Correct. So we have the West Bend Co-op Ski Team, and Head Coach John Sisson will come on up.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I want to start off by saying that these individuals as teams qualified at conference. The girls placed sixth first and placed first in the conference, and the boys placed second with three firsts and three seconds. Both qualified for state. There were 22 teams at state. Our boys qualified, or placed 14th out of 22nd with Marcus Britus placing 32nd, the highest, and the boys out of 157. And then the girls placed second overall, and we had a number of girls from our co-op team that aren't here tonight placed fifth, sixth, fifth and sixth. The two sisters tied for sixth in one of the events. All three of them moved on to Nationals, and one of them placed 14th. As a team at Nationals, we placed 13th out of, sorry, third out of the 13 teams at Nationals. So this is Aiden Sisson, Megan Ginther, and Marcus Britus from the state team. Thank you.
And Erin, I think you're going to help with East and West, correct? The co-op snowboarding team.
Yes, I am here to introduce Hunter Zaskowski, our head coach of the snowboarding team, and we are well-represented, so we have quite a few snowboarders who are going to come stand up here.
Come on up.
Come on, boys.
Oh, yeah. All of you guys.
Let's go. Right next to me. Come on out. Are you sure? All right. All right, hi, I'm Hunter. I just want to go through, do we have everyone? Go through, and I'll say names of everyone and their year in the school, and I'll go back and do some conference and then state results. So starting over here, we have Tobea G Spooner. She is a senior. She's actually a foreign exchange student, so that's pretty awesome to have on the team. We've never had that before, and it was great to have her. And then we have Michaela Trahan, she's a senior as well. And we have Gavin Bear, he's a junior. Aiden Guzy, he is a senior. Michael Spangenberg, he is a senior. Johnny Wendell, who is a sophomore. Ree Shabel, who is a sophomore. Branny Anderson, she is a sophomore. Wow, holy cow. Kieran Doherty, who is a sophomore, I apologize. Sam Casson, who is a senior. Chloe Rumel, who is a sophomore. Ethan Benedict, who is a senior, and Sam Schaefer, who is a senior. All right, so on to some state results here. We'll start with the girls. Top 15 results, Sam Casson, she took 14th in slalom. Sam Schaefer was 11th in slalom. Brianna Shabel was 12th in slalom, and she is our state champion for border cross. Chloe Rumel, she was, she unfortunately had an incident on her border cross event. She would have been, Chloe and Brianna would have been one and two for border cross. Unfortunately, she was disqualified, but she was right there, one and two with Brianna, so I just want to recognize her for that. And Tobea was seventh in border cross, 12th in giant slalom, and that is our, our girls' overall team altogether as a team placed fourth. And on to our boys. Ethan Benedict, he took fifth place in border cross, sixth in slalom, and eighth in giant slalom. Johnny Wendell took sixth in border cross, fifth in slalom, fourth in giant slalom, and third-place podium finish as a boys' overall individually. Michael Spangenberg, he took 12th place in border cross and 12th overall. Kieran Doherty took 12th in slalom and 10th overall. And John, no, he wasn't here, sorry. And our overall boys' team this year at state took second place in the podium, fourth or finish as a team. That's all I have. I just wanted to thank you for letting me take the time to announce my state team. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We always, we always enjoy having, having visitors, and thank you for representing our district so positively. Very impressive accomplishments, and obviously comes with a lot of hard work and dedication and persistence, and those are great qualities to have no matter where you are in life. So allow me to pause for a moment because we'll continue on with our, with our board meeting, and it's a public meeting, which means we always appreciate having a full crowd, but this is also the time when it's just fine to depart. So we'll just pause for a few seconds while, while anyone can, can leave. Thank you for coming.
They are all rushing home so that they can study and attend to their schoolwork. I am sure of it.
Exactly right. All right. So next is our public participation portion. I've got one public participation common card from Mr. Cameron Merkel, and so I'm going to read kind of a summarized version of Board Policy 187. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. I'll summarize the policy at this time. Residents of the district, parents of district, and parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Mr. Merkel, you obtained a public participation common card, and you turned it over to me. You may speak about an agenda item or a non-agenda item. You'll be given three minutes to speak. We have a timer on the board. You'll state your name and relation to the district. I have your address here, and that information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. We as a board will not engage in debate regarding, concerning the remarks or take immediate action. And I mentioned the visible timer. And also to ensure that, that all your comments are heard and that the meeting runs efficiently, I'd ask for those in the audience to refrain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. So I know you've, you've been through the drill before, so, Mr. Cameron, you have, Mr. Merkel, you have the next three minutes. Please proceed.
Okay, perfect. All right. Good evening. Last meeting, I read off all the options that were located inside the task force presentation, but due to the time limit, I could not respond to that. I wanted to put my opinion forth and say that I agree with the fourth slide in regards to consolidating the district by selling certain facilities. With that, a new elementary school would be built without referendum according to the task force. Plus, this was before taxes were raised year after year, so it already, it would, with the, the pricing that was already put on there, it would be three years outdated, but that was without even the taxes being raised year after year. In my opinion, the West Bend School District needs to start living within its means. I feel that we fund and support too many, too many elementary schools, and I believe that we need to look into what is working and what is not. With declining enrollment, as I mentioned in previous meetings, federal and state dollars are not providing enough financial support as they used to. When that happens, it triggers the district to raise taxes. If we are able to get rid of the buildings that are having way higher facility costs and aren't being used efficiently, maybe it's time to get rid of them and start fresh. That way, new families would be able to see a new, more attractive building and feel more comfortable sending their kids there. Lastly, I want to comment on an action item, which is the school district calendar. I noticed that for this proposed year, so for 2022 to 2023, that there was a date put in for freshmen, and thank you, because last year that went, I'm, I'm a part of the crew club, and that ran very, very smoothly, and that was very much appreciated, because I know, when I went in as a freshman, I was absolutely terrified. God, that was so scary. But I know they got more accustomed to it, and it was really easy for them to have a better first day at school. But I did notice that looking beyond that to 2023 to 2024, that certain day, at least what I was viewing, was not put in there for students. So I ask that that does get put in there for students. And then I did know for this 2022 to 2023 year, that the ending year or ending date was changed to is June 8th, and it's usually not that late. So I just hope that that was changed in regards to having enough minutes for normal exam schedules like we used to have in previous years. And that's all I have, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we'll move on then to, on our agenda, the consent agenda is next, and the consent agenda consists of minutes of the March 7, 2022 regular board meeting, revenues and expenses in the aggregate for July 2021 through February of 2022. We have no certified staff contracts to ratify. We have two resignations and two retirements to consider on the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Almost, almost. All right, I will call the roll. Mr. Swigert votes yes. Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Revholtz.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Rongert.
Yes.
All right. The consent agenda is approved. We'll move on then to reports, and we will start with school reports, Fair Park and Badger. And I believe Dr. Jill Reese is going to introduce our presenters. Good evening, Dr. Reese.
Good evening. I'm excited to have two schools presenting to you their school progress again tonight. So we're going to start with Fair Park, and Mr. Tristan Hayes will be presenting for Fair Park, and then we will move to Badger, and Mr. Dave Alman will be presenting for Badger.
Hey, guys. So I had a surprise posse that came. I left them after school, and they all came after me, so I'm really excited. A whole bunch of awesome staff members joined me behind, so I won't introduce any of them, but a really awesome variety of folks that are here, from school support to aid staff members, to just a really awesome representation of the people that work at Fair Park and really make it what it is for us. So I can start with that on our presentation, that Fair Park is the people, really, the bricks and mortar that is Fair Park, is just the place that we spend our time. We understand that what our goal is to look at each kid as an individual and make an impact on their life to make them a better member of our school community, their family community, and the community of West Bend. And we try really hard to live that mission in the way that we meet with kids and the programming and the people that we support. So I'll start with that, and we'll get right after it, because I only have five minutes, right? Brevity is not my strong suit, so I will work through this. The second slide is our triangle. Ooh, I skipped right over it. We do talk about this. It is built on all of those pieces, and the effective and efficient lives at the bottom, along with our safe and secure. And on top of that foundation, we really build what we call our, our school, and our school family is built on these. Once we have our safe and secure and we're ready, then we work on engaging our customers and really making sure that we're providing for the students an experience that they can grow on. In the announcements every morning, I say that we're here to work and grow together, and we really do. And on top of that is student learning. It's at the top in the smallest pyramid, but it really is what we work for. Our goal, our job, our, our mission is to teach the kids and help them be well-rounded, contributing members of the West Bend community. All right, so I put a ton of stuff on here. I apologize for that. I want to say that there is two totally different pieces that are represented in the graphs on the side. So the bottom is a snippet from the state report card. The state of Wisconsin Department of Education issues a school report card to each school in the state, and that is the portion that's in the bottom. It has the two circles. Fair Park is operating at exceeding expectations significantly, and we're really proud of that. Oh, this is just exceeding, I'm sorry, not, not significantly exceeding.
Next year.
Next, I got it, yeah, I know. So inside of this is represented in a few numbers. They did take a hiatus from this because of how the testing happened during the pandemic. I'm really glad that the numbers are there. I don't necessarily say that all of them are an act of representation of the work, but I'm glad that it's here. You have to have a measure of data in order to improve on it. And a couple of things on here that I wanted to highlight, if you look on that circle that is on the growth bar, it is the semicircle on the right-hand side, second from the bottom. We achieved a 100% in our growth goal for our students in mathematics, as measured by the Wisconsin Forward Exam, and this is a testament to the, the work that was done. That means we scored a perfect score for growth. There's still a lot of room for achievement for our, our students and our staff, but we, we are focused on growth, knowing each kid is where they are, and we are pushing, and I'm tremendously proud of that number. We excelled in growth in our language arts, not nearly as proficiently as in our mathematics. Both of these numbers came together with our on-track for graduation readiness to give us our score. The graphs that are on top of that represent our Wisconsin, our universal screener, which is the STAR exam. On the left-hand side, we have our reading scores, and on the right-hand side, we have our math scores. So what we're looking there is we're looking at growth. The red bar indicates students who are not meeting the threshold for readiness, and the green indicates students that are. You see no scores in for kindergarten. Kindergarten students can't take the STAR exam because they're not proficient readers. They're taking an early, early reading version of that, so that's not replicated in this graph. We would expect that first bar represents our first graders, who for the first time at mid-year took the STAR literacy exam, so that's where they're growing from. What you see from one to the other are two representing second grade. Then that smaller graph is a smaller class size they have, which represents third, and the final two bars on those graphs represent our fourth graders. On each of those, you see there is, there is growth that's happening. Now, the graph on the right, it represents mathematics, that, that growth is much more profound, as is our number of students who are meeting our match. This really, again, we have to have data in order to measure where we're headed, and that's what really has formed our action plans as we continue. When I look through for math, we are looking to close gaps, and we know that gap closing is a tremendously important thing, that we can't just teach one bit of curriculum and expect for the same growth to happen, because no two kids are at the same level. As much as we'd like to say we taught and they didn't learn, that's simply not the way education works, and tests don't necessarily measure that in an accurate way, because there's all sorts of external forces. And the STAR exam that we use is just one measure, and never could that be more true than in literacy. So literacy is a space that we are pushing. We are making some very significant changes in the way that we're delivering our instruction, the way that we're utilizing our professionals, and the way that we're trying to tailor our instruction to best meet the needs of each individual student. And I'm going to continue to say that because we're, we've really shifted and allocated resources and people to find, identify, and really attack spaces where we're looking for growth. And we talk about that in cohorts. I use the word tier one and tier two. Tier one is in the classroom, so that is the teacher. They are teaching everyone. Everybody gets tier one, and that should be our best hope. We understand that there are kids that, when you deliver instruction, aren't necessarily going to be there, so we identify those students, label them in tier two. We've had a huge push from our reading specialists and high, most highly-trained individuals to provide push-in. That means they're coming into the classroom, providing additional instruction inside the classroom, not, not pulling out, but pushing in, and it's really a philosophy of all hands on deck, of everybody having true fidelity for all of the kids, and it's helped in the collaboration, it's helped in the participation. Nobody's coming out of the space, but instead, we're coming in. And I think it's analogous beautifully, that together is the only way that this can happen. And I, I think that's going to lead to my next points. I can read those for you if you'd like, but I think for the most part, we're really trying to be agile and purposeful in all of the actions and instruction that happens. All right, so engagement, customer service. These slides are from our staff that has filled these out over the years. So 2018-19 coincides with my first year as the principal of Fair Park Elementary, and I am tremendously proud of a lot of these numbers that are on here, and the growth of those are something, again, that I'm tremendously proud of, and it speaks to the cohesiveness and the participation of our staff. They not only want to be at Fair Park, but they don't mind coming and donating their time in a board meeting, and I am truly impressed by them every day. And again, it's that we work together. None of us are the expert, but instead, it's what we're able to do together. Our motto last year was "Stronger Together," and we stand by that. We know that it's not something that I can do as the principal, they can do as teachers, or even families can do on their own. It takes that pyramid, a triangle, and it has to be trust, and it has to be communication that we're out for each other, with each other. This year, our, our theme is "Fair Park Rocks," and we took that from the analogy of the, the saying of if you take the jar and you put rocks in, and then the sand in, and the petals, and the water, you can fill it up, but you have to have what those big, most important things are first. And if you do them in the wrong order, you're not able to, to put the right things at the right places. It throws off everything. And I think if we establish ourselves as a place of community that trusts ourselves, that trusts our professionals, and works together with our families, that is our secret power this year, and we're going to continue working together on those premises. And I think some of this data speaks to that. All right, "Safe and Secure." So I took two snippets of graphs, and they're going to need some explanation in the interest of student information. I left some of those off the top. Is my number of major referrals for students. It talks about who and what is receiving office referrals, so majors, students that speak with me directly. We know that this is tremendously important. We know that students that act out, students who are not following our rules, there's reasons behind those, and it's my job as the principal of Fair Park to work together with our teams, to work together with our families, to help interrupt those behaviors in a way that is meaningful, but also that shows change. And there's a perfect combination between expectations and explicit instruction that I think we've really leaned on. There is support and there's teaching, but there's also holding people to expectation, and that starts with myself and my teachers, but also filters down directly to our students. When we look at this number, this is the top 20 students. Only 10 of the 364 students at Fair Park have received more than two referrals, which tells you, when we talk about a threshold of students, we're talking about 3%, which I think on any bell curve on anywhere, anytime, that's a tremendously impressive graph. And I do not think that any of the students up there, and I guess I'll talk to that after my next graph. So the next graph talks by grade level. That first large graph talks about those referrals condensed by grades. That first graph represents my kindergarten. It's my students who are learning how to do school. And yes, the kindergartners love to play Pokemon and Ninjago and Chase and Cops and Robbers, and it becomes inherently physical, and we have to teach them, oh, no, we, we don't do that. And it's not the same as a physical altercation, but at Fair Park, we believe in the safety and security of our students. When there's physical altercations, I speak to the students. And you'll see an exponential amount of those come from our kindergarten. It doesn't make a perfect line as to go kindergarten first, second, third, but it goes kindergarten second, first, third, fourth. And the graph is indicative of students that spend more time at Fair Park, learn how to participate, they learn how to be successful, and behavior comes down to learning how to be successful. I and most of my team agree that kids will do well if they can, and when students aren't doing well, it's our job to put together a team, to find them and meet them where they are, and show them how to be successful. I believe that all of my students, every single one of them, knows that they can be successful. Some of them take a little longer, and we're, we're working on that, but that can't be me, it can't just be them, and it can't just be their classroom teacher. It has to be all three of us. And that's what it looks like for me. When students come to the office, we always call home, we always work on a plan, we work on a variety of things. We use restorative practices, sure. We use discipline-minded, so we do out-of-school and school suspensions. We do missing recess. We do changing of privileges, waiting in lines, not waiting in lines. We have all sorts of tools that we can use, but one thing doesn't work for another kid. I think about this time of the year, and I told my staff the analogy of going on a car ride, if any of you have children, and you've tried to take a, a long car ride, there is going to inevitably come a time in that car ride where someone poked someone, it is the end of the world, and I usually find the beginning of March to be about that time in the car ride where you've ran out of snacks, and you can't say, "I will stop this car, so help me." And, and we just have to come through and lean on the things that we've taught and understand that it might not be that they're totally angry or malicious towards their sibling, it's that they need to be reminded, "We're going to make it, we have a destination, we know what we're going to do," and you just need to reset where we're at. And, and that's about where we are in this school year. Spring break is very aptly timed, because you feel like you've been with these, these these family of people, these 20 kids for an awful long time, and it's true. So I'll move forward. I'm not going to make five minutes, Jen, I'm sorry.
I'm going to keep you up for five.
That's good, I can't wait. Uh, so we talked about effective and efficient, and as we move up that, that pyramid, uh, here we are. I talked a little bit about push-in, and that's been one of the major shifts. Um, again, the, the philosophy of the student is behind, we're going to pull them out and give them, um, more direct, isolated. Really has shifted now for us in our building, and all of our tier-two support pushes in. So during our reading time, you see a fourth grade teacher, I think it's here even. Oh, yeah, this is Anderson's here. Um, here she is providing direct instruction, she's a classroom teacher. At this same time, there is a reading specialist in the room who is working with a different group of students for a more direct. So these students that would have otherwise had more of an independent structure, which is, here's a task you know how to do, continue it on your own. Now, instead of that being a student who we have already identified is behind, that student is now getting a second dose in the classroom every single day from one of my highest-trained individuals. And instead of pulling out, we're pushing in with peers, we're providing that for a really meaningful, purposeful, and it's not just happening in one classroom, it's happening in every single classroom at Fair Park. So this is in a direct response to seeing our data, looking for growth and gap closing. And if you have people who are highly trained, we'll make them work. And you can ask any of them, they're meeting a lot more groups and students than they ever have. But we found the unintended consequence is meaningful conversations, that that classroom teacher can have a direct conversation with the specialist, and they can talk about what was best, what did you see, how can we better meet, meet the needs of these kids. Uh, so the same tiered approach, we talked about tier one, tier two, uh, that exists for math, it exists for reading, and it exists for behaviors. We have a PBIS and behavioral team. We talk about, the teacher can say, "All right, boys and girls, quiet down," and we know that the majority of kids will, but on, like any bell curve works, there's a number of kids that necessarily don't follow those instructions the first time, or whatever the behavior may be, and we identify them in the same tiered process. We have an excellent team, I listed on here, our cares team, which, uh, includes our, uh, student liaison, our counselor and our psych, all of which are fantastic, amazing people who are problem solvers. They are just wired to help kids. They cannot wait to help find and build successes. They have gone to conferences and received advanced degrees about helping and working with kids who are in some level of, of disalignment, who are maybe dysregulated, who may just be looking for a different way to be successful, who can't handle small problems. And so we help work there. When that doesn't work, there's always the principal's office, which is a tool we use as well, but we always understand that kids are working from a place of, they want to, but they can't. So if we haven't given them an alternative behavior, if we haven't given them replacements, if we haven't explicitly taught behaviors, then we're just going to punish to see the behavior repeat again. There's nothing better than helping a kid solve a problem, feel successful, it changes everything. Due to time, I'm going to skip over my novel approaches and methodologies, um, and, and with a delightful picture of our students at Fair Park. So many cool things that I see when I, and I, I chose these all very purposefully. Our Battle of the Books team is in the bottom right. Um, that's Mr. Sternig in the background, who I believe is also here.
I'm here.
What's up, Luke? Um, so this is our, our battle-winning team, and the commitment that this team had, we had on the computer, a boy was on vacation in either Florida or Mexico.
He was in Mexico.
He was in Mexico, and he didn't want to miss the team's battle, so he Skyped in from vacation. I'm sure his parents loved me, but, um, so there he was in Mexico and decided that he needed to log on to be part of this team. And they won, and of course, it was all worth it in the end. Um, but again, just those same, same kind of passionate learners that we like to create and celebrate. So that concludes my presentation to the board.
Great. Any questions?
Tristan, two questions. Um, what would you say is the, the biggest success your team has noticed this year? Maybe it was anticipated, maybe it wasn't, but what's, what's the best thing to celebrate?
Um, so I'm, it's a bit of an abstract celebration, that I think we, we get lost in, in these huge pieces, the disruptions of COVID, of all the changes and the things that were lost. We knew that there was deficits, especially in grade levels like the second grade, and that's, that's not a local problem, that's a nationwide problem because of where that happened developmentally. Um, our staff and our students have hit the ground running. Kids are super resilient, and they want to learn. And if you create an environment that is rich and rich with opportunity, uh, to take a, a page from Jen Wimmer, um, it was an opportunity-rich environment. And we, we had specialists and, and teachers and family members that were asking, "What can we do to help?" And when we're all on the same page and all on the same team, uh, we have seen tremendous growth. From what, what was kind of bleak as far as numbers, as far as, um, and I think we could go back to the, the graph, when we look at our students in second grade that started this year not reaching, reaching benchmark, it was, it was alarming. So again, we circle the wagon, and when you see results come in, it's super impressive. So my biggest success is knowing that no, no, no lack of growth, no deficiency can't be overcome. We have the tools, we have the people, and watching it work like we planned, when a plan goes to, according to plan, um, that's a success that I'm super proud of.
Okay, second question, flip side, and you, you maybe, uh, alluded to it already, but what's the biggest challenge that you're seeing this year that, that you're still working to solve for?
I, I, so I, I get stuck in these, but every, every problem that we don't fix, every kid that's not reached, is something that we all take very personally. And there are kids that fall, fall through the cracks, and we can put in a hu, a thousand programs, and we can work with a hundred parents, but there are times when everybody does their best, and we still aren't able to reach behaviorally, academically, any of those, knowing that this is what we do, this is something we love, and we still can't crack it. Those are the ones, and, and I think it's more so, there's more kids that fell through the cracks, that didn't have the specific supports, that we don't know what to do because everything's new. Uh, falling, failing fast is something that we try really hard, we try to shake it off, but when something doesn't work, when you think you're really good at it, that's tough. So that's something that, that we're working on, and that's something we're going to continue, um, as long as we can. But it's something that, it takes a team. No one can solve these new problems that none of us plan for, none of us asked for.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, kind of going on Paul's question, so obviously, we know there was, you know, definite, some deficits is the word I'm going to use, uh, because of COVID. Do you feel that this year, um, you, you will be able to overcome most of those with students? So for instance, as you talked about, second grade is a tough year, right? So if I was home and trying to homeschool and all those things, um, that's a tough comeback. And I know third grade, I feel like, at least when my kids were little, I feel like the odd years were, were tougher for my kids, like first, third, fifth, that just seemed to be the case. So do you feel that we've been able to overcome some of that, and that, you know, you're sending most, I understand what you're saying, there are some that, you know, perhaps we have to do some more work with, but you know, you feel like you're sending most into third grade, um, at about the level we would have sent them prior to COVID, or still not yet?
Thank you, Nancy.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, the, the first part of that is, we never just say, "I'm a third-grade teacher, this is what I teach, and the kids better be ready for it." That's, that's not the way that business is done. We, we do extensive testing and supporting and benchmarking and conferencing. Reading is this ever-evolving piece, and the science on it changes often. And the best that we can do is create meaningful relationships with the students, and really get to learn who they are as a learner, and then provide every possible support that we can. Am I going to have our second-grade group normalized by next year? I don't think that looks, that looks possible, feasible, but are we going to show tremendous growth? And are we going to have learners who are ready for third grade? Absolutely.
I think it's just going to be interesting as we look back. Obviously, you know, this will all be studied by people, you know, much smarter than I am, who will have all kinds of commentary on things we should have done or shouldn't have done, or, you know, had we done this, we'd have a different outcome. So I just wondered, you know, when we look at the amount of time that students were not in the classroom, um, due to no one's fault, obviously, you know, what, what does that comeback look like? And how far does that set our students back? Is that a year setback? Is that a two-year setback for some students? Is that, is that something that can't be recovered because that was such a critical time in their lives? You know, it'll just be interesting. I don't expect you to have those answers. This is more of an, you know, analytical kind of commentary that I don't think that we will know the full outcomes of how severe COVID was for some people. And I don't mean the illness, I mean the aftereffect of it, for several years to come.
And so it's, it's like tough, because we have high expectations, and we know high expectations work. And the first thought is, while they're behind, we should go back, but you can't, you can't move to third grade by teaching first-grade curriculum. And I think it's, it's, there's so much to unpack inside of that. And again, the, the person that you're looking for is way smarter than me as well. But again, being agile and having teachers who are willing to take risks is really important right now. People who feel supported, who are supported, and are willing to say, "We're trying everything. And if it doesn't work, we're going to fail fast, try something new." Um, and that really is one of the impetuses in our building, to have our specialists in the classroom with really awesome teachers and support people. So that's what we're doing right now, and I'm really proud of the team for that work.
Last one, I promise. So kudos to you, your scores look great from your teachers, and kudos to all of you for coming tonight. It's awesome to see you, so thank you.
So Nancy beat me to it, but I was going to say kudos to you with those, um, engagement and customer satisfaction scores. I come previously from a world of HR reporting and analytics, and the engagement survey was like a huge deal, and to see things in the nineties is, is stellar. And so if your, if your staff is proud and happy to work in that building, that's only going to make the kids more successful, so, kudos.
Hats to them.
Yeah.
Plenty way to go on the engagement survey.
Tristan, what, what do you need from us?
Uh, so I talk about the triangle of support, and I, I stand by that. We need family, we need school, and we need, uh, so us in our triangle. So our, our Fair Park family, we have our families of our students, and there's another arm inside of that, it's our community. And you are the representatives of our community, and you speak for them, and, and that's a space that you do. We have so much to be proud of in West Bend. We have an amazing, uh, community that does amazing things. We have, uh, industry, we have an amazing facilities, we have parks, we have a really amazing space, and it really is a task of you for that third arm, that third piece of that triangle. And I, and I think you know the, the task that's ahead of you. And I, again, I'm proud to be part of this, this school-family piece, and the families that come to us, um, they're really good at telling us what they need, and we're working hard to meet it, but we, we can't have any part of that weak. A two-legged stool doesn't do it. So if you can continue to be you, to reach out, to galvanize our community with support, um, that's, that's what we need from you.
I'll just echo one more, thank you. I was in your building, so I saw a lot of you in action. I would just say, it's crazy time when you get kids passing in the hallway and, "Who are you?" Like, who are, and, but you, the, the energy level of your kids are, are tremendous, and you match it, that I, I saw it and witnessed it. Thank you, Shelley, Luke, everyone there. Um, again, your scores are, are great, but more so, you go there, you see it in person, and thank you for doing it every day. I know it's, it's hard to get up and put on the energy face every day, but you guys do it, so, thank you.
Appreciate it, Kurt, thank you. That's my favorite question so far, so.
Was, was there a question in there?
Yeah, yeah. Just giving feedback, that's all.
Who has the most energy out of the whole group back there? Well, let me just.
Depends on the day, we, we, we take turns. Anything else from you guys?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you to all Fair Park representatives for coming, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we invite Principal Dave Alman. Good evening. We got all the technology set. Thank you again, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, Tim. Hold on, Fair Park, thanks for coming for me tonight. I am a Fair, I'm a Fair Park alum, so Tristan, thank you for, you know, you're, you're welcome for me paving the way, not in studenthood, but, uh, talked about those detentions with the principal, I was first in line for those.
Dave will send you good news.
Yeah, thank you. You do, they do send me great kids, actually. So, uh, good evening, uh, Dave Alman, Principal Badger Middle School, pleasure to be here this evening. Tristan talked about our district improvement plan there, the, um, the triangle, and you can see on the bottom, you know, "Safe and Secure, Effective and Efficient." So for Safe and Secure, I plan on highlighting, um, our standard re, uh, response protocols for our staff, and our PBIS are positive interventions, positive behavior interventions and supports for our students. In Effective and Efficient, I want to highlight how the pro, the process staff, staff utilizes in analyzing data, um, to drive our instruction. Engagement and, and customer satisfaction, we're going to highlight some strengths over the past year, and look forward to seeing end results for this year as well. And with student learning, um, we're going to celebrate back to in-person learning for those of, for those students who chose that, as well as the successes we have now in the new world of the virtual learning process. So unlike Tristan, as you can see, you know, I, I've come in, my, with my old man glasses on, he doesn't have those yet, so my graphs are few but bigger, so I, I hope that's okay. Yeah, you're welcome, yes. Um, so you can see here, for the, uh, student learning, um, aspect of this, math, the goal was in the 21, 22 school year, math teachers will increase student discourse by launching and reviewing low roles and expectations in the college-prepared math, or CPM math curriculum. This was a big part to, to getting back to the business of school this year. That CPM involves a lot of group work, it involves a lot of student-to-student discourse. Um, it's truly the, um, "I do, we do, you do," and it's more, more like a project-based, it isn't your traditional sit-and-get mathematics piece. In literacy, um, in this school year, the literacy teachers will utilize the partnerships and comprehensive literacy, or the PCL framework, and lesson deployment, and as evidenced by increase of gradual release and readers' and writers' workshop. So some of the things they've done to help that out were quarterly meetings with literacy specialists, they calibrated with the model PCL classrooms, and they really focused on something, uh, one, one thing called an anchor chart this year, they wanted to utilize more anchor charts. So the, the, the chart up there, you can see, uh, seventh grade math and literacy scores, and that is our STAR assessment, okay? That's our STAR assessment from fall to winter. And the math, the, the celebration there is, um, that we went up in every aspect. In seventh grade for math, we went from 43% of the students, um, being at or above benchmark, up to 46. The, so for the seventh graders, we went from 48% being at or above benchmark, up just that one point to 49%, but it was a gain. Eighth grade, the math went from 28% at or above benchmark to the 32% at or above benchmark. And then again, in literacy, they went from 45 to 46. So there were gains made. Traditionally, with, um, that, and it, again, as Tristan said, it is just one measure. I am looking forward to getting back to Wisconsin-Florida, a full gamut of Wisconsin-Florida testing this year, to see truly where we are, um, in terms of our student and student achievement. Traditionally, in the winter for the STAR, we show a little bit of a dip. So the fact that we're still creating gains, we're making gains, is a celebration there. Side four is engagement and customer satisfaction. So for student engagement, um, we didn't, throughout, throughout the pandemic, we didn't have student surveys. So I'm proud to say at the end of this year, we're going to have once again a student survey to get their feedback on instruction, on, on the whole of Badger Middle School, and use that feedback to make Badger in an even better place. Family feedback, family engagement, we have a PTO this year for the first time, so I've been back as Badger's principal now, this is my seventh year back. This is the first time we have an engaged PTO that really has a, a goal, and we've been meeting on a regular basis, um, and I'm thrilled about that. Some other things that I want to highlight there are the live concerts. Our kids are so talented, I mean, all across the district, our kids are talented. We saw just the athletic venue here tonight. But I'm always, I say, I'm impressed by something I can't do. My musical repertoire is, repertoire is press play or press stop, okay? So I go into our band, orchestra, and choir rooms and watch them practice, and it's amazing. And then you, when you get to see the whole thing come together in a concert, and you see the parents and families there, that was amazing. So the, the live concerts were truly a celebration this year. And I look forward to next year, coming up, hosting family engagement nights, and really, I, I would like to do a lot of parent learning nights. There's so much out there nowadays for a 13-year-old, and I think it's important that, as Tristan said, we, we secure that triangle up, and get the families and get the parents engaged, um, so that they have an understanding of where we're coming as, as, as a school district, um, but also some of the look-for's in, in some of the things that are in our, you know, 12, 13, and 14-year-olds' lives nowadays. It's not like when I was growing up, it's not like when you were growing up, there's just more out there. Um, and then staff engagement. So last year's staff engagement, uh, results, there was a, a clear message for us, and that was, we need to remain in-person learning. We need our kids in front of us, we need to be in classrooms teaching kids, for as many kids as can be there. So that, that was the big goal that we had for this year. So I talked about the staff will engage in mostly in-person learnings, including PLCs, DAMs, staff meetings, goal team meetings. Um, so all of those meetings allow for frequent formal and informal feedback, uh, specific to the team. So when we talk about those types of things, one of the highlights is 93.5% of staff agreed strong, agreed or strongly agreed that our statements are aligned to our actions as an administrative team. And then, um, one of our focus areas is, we, we scored an 83.3 for staff agreed to, or strongly agreed that the feedback they receive is beneficial. So that, that anything we're doing with them, they can take right back, and hopefully it impacts student achievement, learning, and behavior. All right, "Safe and Secure." All right, safe and secure. So, you can see how the graph there shows that 85.2% of our students have zero or one major referrals in our PBIS network there. So, attendance affects minor disciplines. We didn't include minor or majors because if a kid is, you know, 30 seconds late to a class, they receive a minor referral. So, we didn't include the minors in there. But those are the major incidents, and that's a huge celebration that that number, you know, 85.4% of our kids have zero or one major. The purpose of our PBIS or Positive Behavior Intervention System is to sustain an effective and positive learning environment needed for all students to achieve social, emotional, academic success through monitoring data, reinforcing positive behavior, so that students are prepared for college readiness and career success. This shows us that, A, Fair Park, Green Tree, all of our elementary schools, Silverbrook Intermediate School, they're doing a great job because we're getting a great product up to Badger. Okay, the kids know the expectations. They know the expectations in all six aspects of their school day, from when they get on the bus in the morning to when they go to first-hour class, to when they transition in hallways, get their lunches, and then go home at night. They're following expectations for the most part. Another thing that we do as staff is our standard response protocol. The standard response protocol is a toolkit to support us through the safety drills. Obviously, you know, monthly, we have our fire drills to, you know, this last Wednesday, last week Wednesday was a beautiful day to have a fire drill. We had a fire drill, and we do all those things. But it's kind of taken to another level in this post-colonial by an era that we live in. We still have to be cognizant of a lot. Okay, so we really dug into that standard response protocol and really look at safety drills, for instance, like a hold, what we call a hold, and that's when there might be a medical situation in the school. A secure, when there's an external threat and we have to secure the perimeter of the building. A lockdown, as we all kind of know about lockdowns, that's when there may be an internal threat. And then also taking a look at with staff evacuate and shelter and practicing those things with students so that if there is, you prepare for everything so and they pray for nothing to happen. But I feel good about how we do prepare for everything and the engagement of the staff in all of those drills. Slide six, this is effective and efficient. So, we have the BLT, the Data Action Model, and the our PLCs that I'm going to talk about. The BLT, my building leadership team, really the big, big goal there was get back to in-person full staff meetings. I needed my family back. You know, everybody needed to be back. We're a very close, tight-knit staff. We rely on one another, and that in-person with the staff was as valuable as in-person with the kids. Our Data Action Model, the last time, pre-COVID, I was able to present to the board, we talked about our data into action model, and really, it's bi-weekly data meetings for our departments. And they they take a look at the data. They take a look at their formative and summative assessments. They take a look at, you know, our STAR scores and other computerized scores and whatnot, and put together plans of action for how best to meet the needs of students in the cohort that's in front of them. And they've bought into and have done very well with that model. And then, the PLCs, professional learning communities. We have time embedded in our school day where our teachers meet as a professional learning community, and really, there's four main questions that drive those meetings. They are, what do we want students to learn? How do we know when they're learning it? What do we do if they're not learning it? And what do they do if, what do we do if they already know it? So, we take those, once a week, there's a school counselor and an administrator with each one of our houses. We go through those meetings. We answer those questions, talk about student successes and concerns, and they bring those, we bring those back then as the student success team, which meets and we put together a, put together action plans for certain students or certain programming pieces that we take back then to the house teachers, that they can deploy those action plans. So, on this side, on this slide, you can see the many celebrations and the many talents of Badger Middle School. And again, the highlight is the kids. We have the orchestra, the orchestra room there. In the middle, in the bottom there, we have girls and boys, cross-country and track. The kids just love these, this group loves foursquare. So, we took a picture of them playing foursquare there at lunch. You can see in the upper one towards the right, not all the way to the right, though, we got a new Buddy Badger costume this year. So, able to get the Buddy out. We did have one all-school assembly, which was really great. Oh, man, that was great. Having the kids and the energy back in that gym was the way, exactly what it was supposed to be like. If you look at the lower right there, the staff member helping the young man hold up that stringer of fish, that's Tony Lysowski. He's our, he is our lead custodian. And Tony, along with Jack Chamberlain, one of our teachers, they started a fishing club, and they take the kids out fishing wherever they can go. And that was a really awesome thing for kids who never went fishing and kids who weren't necessarily overly engaged in school. Now, they have two adults in that building that they can really go to. And the upper right there, that is in our science room, that Amplify Curriculum has really changed the engagement as well of our science curriculum for students and staff alike. They really, they enjoy it, and I'm hoping all the scores that follow show that.
Thank you. Questions?
Dave, I'm going to jump into the data just for a little bit. So, back on the math achievement. Good to see, you know, improvement fall to winter across all facets. But can you talk a little bit about what's going on in eighth grade? You know, obviously, on the literacy side, pretty much on par with where the seventh graders were, but what happened, you know, and maybe was it last year with this year's eighth graders and the seventh grade program? Obviously, it looks like there's a gap there that, I'm assuming everybody's hustling to close, but can you give us a little more color there?
Yes. So, to pinpoint the exact thing, I don't know. It could be any number of things. But so, our students were, have had a number of years, and I kind of compare it to PBIS. Like, a student has PBIS kindergarten through eighth-grade year, and then in high school, you expect them to know that. Okay, so we've had our CPM, our college-prepared math curriculum now, for a handful of years. The students coming up into seventh grade, we're used to that CPM. Again, it is a lot of student-to-student discourse. There isn't, there's more so an online textbook. We do have a paper, you know, textbook as well, but it's an online textbook. There was a lot of group work that went into that, and with COVID, that all went to the wayside. And it was, it was our, all of our rooms were in rows. It was a lot of sit-and-get. Just the modality with which the teaching went on was a lot different. I think that had something to do with it. And then from, you know, from March of, what was that, 2020 now? I know we don't like to say that, but March of 2020, that end of the school year created some of the gaps too, that we're currently, so what we do to, what we've done to try and backfill those is really focus the first two, three weeks of school now on some of the things, you know, as they're teaching class norms, as we're reviewing practices in classrooms and things like that, they go back to some of those gap areas, those deficit areas, and do what I call bootcamps with those in certain classrooms to help bolster those skill sets.
So, will we have another assessment in the STAR program yet this year to kind of get that end of your data point?
Yep. So, we are starting tomorrow. As a matter of fact, we're starting Wisconsin Forward in, we're starting Wisconsin Forward in science, and then we'll do social studies, ELA in mathematics for Forward coming up in April, and then in early May or mid-May, we have the final STAR scores as well. Yep.
Good. Thank you.
I think in any school, not just Dave's, but one of the things you touched on in your presentation was around those teacher groups, those PLCs, where they're looking at their local classroom data. Dave, you highlighted the STAR data, and then we're talking about Forward, another piece. So, what we're doing is triangulating data across the system, so we're not leaning on one piece and making sure our staff have the right tools when we're unpacking those assessments so that they understand where to target instruction. And it might be for a whole class because of a larger deficit. It might be for a small group so that we're able to accelerate out of some of the dip in scores that we're seeing. So, that's kind of the focus, not just for Badger, but across the system in that analysis and making sure we're kind of looking at which instructional levers have the greatest return on investment to accelerate that for all kids. So.
Yep. Those department meetings are, thank you. That's really the focus of the department meetings on where are we, you know, not only using our formative and summative assessments, but also, you know, STAR, Wisconsin Forward, those types of things too.
Okay, so then I'll give you the easy question that I gave Tristan. So, what's the unanticipated success this year that you're seeing?
There's a lot of them, and I'm going to work with the one that's kind of surprising is that we're, I think we're getting to all kids now. And through this pandemic, we've learned a lot, and I think we've learned a lot of, you know, we're people, persons, you know, in the education world. And we learned who our people, kids are as well. But we're also touching on some of the kids that do well virtually, and they do well in a hybrid model. So, it was cool to see that as well. But really, the success is just, again, being back in person and re-norming what it looks like to walk in the hallway appropriately, to get back into classrooms, how to work in groups and give kids these executive functioning skills and work with them on those executive functioning skills that they need, not only in classrooms, not only in schools, but wherever they go in our community and in the world. Just the capability to be able to do that, again, has been my huge celebration. Thank you.
I'll ask you the same question I asked Tristan. What type of support do you need from us?
Well, I just want to thank you for the support that you've given us because through the pandemic, we've been pretty nifty with how we've done things. And we've been pretty successful. I mean, and we're going to get back to where we need to be, but we've been pretty successful. So, thank you for, in our, in the rearview mirror, thank you for that. Continue to give kids experiential learning opportunities. Now that we can go back there to that place and be in person and not be wearing masks or worry about, you know, these things spreading, I think those experiential learning opportunities are huge for kids, the hands-on pieces. So, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I wouldn't mind like a full kitchen to do some tech ed or some tech ed and/or, you know, faces, family and consumer education things at Badger Middle School. If you want to make me a woodshop, Joel, I'll be happy to have that woodshop there as well. So, autos, whatever, whatever we can. But no, the continued support in the programming is what I asked for. And thank you once again for what we've done over the last two years. It's nothing short than amazing.
So, I'd be remiss if we didn't talk about behavior since, obviously, that's been a hot topic. So, I'm looking at your slide where you've got safe and secure. So, it looks like, you know, 85% of your students are obviously following rules and, you know, having good behavior. So, there's no percentages there. So, you know, it's a little hard for me to tell. But what percentage of your population is seeing six or more major incidences out of all students?
I would have to look at the exact percentage, but that's like at the 10-ish percent, I would say, gets to that, gets to that level. And once we get to a certain level, we do have a progressive discipline system. We try and, we try and restore behaviors as much as possible. We do use the progressive discipline system as well. And again, like Tristan said, we're only so nifty in our punitive measures. You know, we have lunch detentions, after-school detentions, you know, holds before and after school essentially, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and, you know, pre-expulsions and things like that. But we did a relaunch of our Tier One PBIS, so PBIS for all, at the beginning of this school year, and it was a great reminder because we actually had a lot of staff that, I don't want to say forgot, but it was a great reminder for all, for staff and students. We have a PBIS matrix. We have them all over our school that we can refer to. It gives intentional language with ICAN statements for students. And one of the really things authentically that came through over the last couple of years is each house, which consists of a cohort of anywhere between 140 to 160 kids, depending upon the year, they looked at their data, and they by house would pinpoint a target area per month. They would talk to the kids about that target area, say, hands and feet to self in the hallway. Okay, they would pinpoint that, reward kids for following those behaviors, and then have a celebration at the end of the month, and then kind of reboot and look at the data and go from there.
Okay, and then one other question. Since I've had kids go through the system, I had one kid who didn't have the house system, and then I had two who did. Obviously, the house system seems to be something that we favor in this district. How is that more beneficial than just, you know, treating them like they're in high school already for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade?
Sure. It allows staff to forge quality relationships with kids. So, right now in our five-person house system, and I was a part of Badger Middle School. I taught there for 13 years. I was part of a five-person house, a four-person house, a three-person house. In my last three years in the classroom, I was a two-person house. And the smaller the house is, really, you get to know the kids much more in-depth. You just get to know the kids better. You get to know the students' needs better, and you can address student needs much better when you have a smaller cohort of students and you have a few, fewer teachers working and really wrapping around those teachers. I also found that this, in the house system, it's easier to communicate with parents. You find out how parents want to be communicated with, and then it's, you know, it's, you can take one of five or one of four or one of three teachers can be the communicator with certain parents. So, it's just, it allows more, it allows more eyes on students and to wrap around student services.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Yep, thank you.
All right, and the other reports?
Mind if I answer one thing about the behavior?
Oh, of course, Dr. Reese.
Nancy, to get to your question about that other percent. So, if we look K-12, about 3.5% of our kids district-wide have six or more. So, that just gives you a kind of a big-picture look. Uh-oh. I didn't bring all the data with me, but yes.
Yeah, and I just got, so, the data seems, grade school, like we saw the Fair Park, 10% of the kids had less. So, all of a sudden, now you're jumping up to 15% by eighth grade. So, that's like 50% increase. So, like, why is it happening? Is it just the nature of our all-school districts seeing this? And maybe, more importantly, Nancy asked a question. We found like, what are we doing about it? Maybe more even school district-wide?
Yeah. I think, I don't believe you would see that different in other districts. I do believe that that would be a trend that you would see across districts, across states, nationally. I think big kids have bigger behaviors, right? But sometimes, it's more a manifestation of the amount of behaviors or the types of behaviors that go into these six-plus with, starts with something small, gets bigger, gets bigger, gets bigger, and adds on. So, I don't think it's necessarily a West Bend thing. I think it's more of a national thing that you would see. In terms of the question about what are we doing about it, I know that our student services department has worked really hard to put systems and response codes, trauma-informed care, and things like that into place. So, I don't know that we have all the answers out of the gate right now, but I know that we're working through systematized plans to do some of that work.
Other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer?
Just a friendly reminder that next week, mark spring break, school will resume for students and staff Monday, April 4. So, everyone enjoy some well-deserved time off for yourselves with friends and family as well. Just a shout-out, I think Dave had Tony Lysowski, that first shift custodian over at Badger, who's got a fishing club at Badger. There's also a high school program that they started. I was just in looking at the collection of lures that the teachers have for the kids and took them out fishing for the first time, ice fishing, and then they're going to do some spring work as well. So, unplanned, but if anyone has some fishing equipment they would like to donate, I know that both programs are always looking for that. There are students who have never fished before. Maybe it's not something that they do regularly, and we've just been taking in lures and different rods, reels, et cetera. So, if anyone wants to donate anything, feel free to send it directly to those schools or here to the ESC, and we'll make sure and distribute it. I know students are really thankful for it, and we've all been on the other end of a line when you lose a lure or two. So, they're very much appreciated. Congratulations to Noah Becker. He's an eighth grader at Badger. He's competing in the state spelling bee competition this Saturday in Madison, so another West Bend student representing at the state level. So, good luck to Noah. Thanks for representing West Bend. I'm sure we'll have him come in and show off his skills, but hopefully, he'll progress and maybe make it to the nationals. So, we look forward to cheering him on as well. One of the pieces that we've heard kind of through public comment, and we've talked about in different ways at the board level, is around our facilities. And we talked about kind of that report, and I know that was a piece that the board, when I was hired, we dug into around right-sizing the district, aging facilities, resetting some capital things. So, just to kind of, for the benefit of everyone, let's recap what we've, what we've done, because I know it seems like just COVID is on everyone's mind, but we're quietly doing a lot of work behind the scenes too. So, again, I got hired during that time, so it had to be kind of virtual, and we didn't get the benefit of some of the community meetings that we would have in another. But some of my experiences as an assistant superintendent in the seventh largest, largest district in the state was in charge of enrollment and school closures. So, during my tenure, I was part of right-sizing a district and closing four schools and programs. So, I came with that experience. I know that that was probably a piece that set me apart. It's hard work to do that. People love their schools. You can see Waukesha going through that right now with them closing an elementary. But it's work that we have to do to be responsive to what's needed. So, I certainly reviewed that independent report that came forward from the board and some pieces that we've done. We kind of had that plan. We've talked about our community conversations. We have a vision for how to engage the public, our community, whether it's students, families, larger community, staff members, around that vision and planning for our facilities. We're updating the UW population lab statistics because certainly, this interruption in building, in, you know, population and those things, we need to get a handle on that future forward. I've engaged in planning discussions to understand the vision for development and housing in the communities we serve. I know the county executive, Josh Shulman. I regularly attend. He's got a commitment to creating opportunity. He's got a commitment to creating opportunities for accessible family housing, especially in that kind of first home purchase as a means to retain people in our community or attract them to. So I work with that team. We've done an audit, we've started, that was in progress, but an audit of all spaces to update that information, right? It's, it's been a little while, but it's inclusive down to every single fixture. That would be complete this summer to just reassess those. We've completed an independent assessment of our athletic facilities as a standalone item to be incorporated in that. We've reviewed our debt picture. We've done some refinancing. We also set a cycle of review for all contracts that we hold so that we can look at it. Another piece, I, I came from that unique K-8 with four different districts working together, and we were really big proponents of consolidated services within or across districts. Our size sometimes affords us to be the person who can help support consolidating services. So maybe there's a much smaller neighbor that, that could benefit from something we have. So the analysis of those contracts as well as kind of that unique view on consolidating and cooperating with others on contracted services or services that we have that others need. And then working with Go Right Way, understanding their routing software, that routing software package, in addition to some other exterior ones that I've looked at and worked with in the past, what that allows me to do is kind of set a net around an area when we start modeling and looking at what attendance boundaries look like and what that real impact is. So we currently don't have that piece, but that's something we'll explore to put in place because then when you're modeling, you can reset and you can look at not just the transportation times, but what's that growth projection in that area? You overlay all these maps together. So it's the census piece, it's the transportation piece, it's understanding the school that you're creating and what the needs that might be on campus are so that you can set kind of nets around boundaries as needed and do a, a full analysis. So that's a piece. And then understanding the value of the property we hold. We own all of our property and what I would look at is a phased exploration because it's pretty disruptive to change someone's school and all those pieces. But as we said, we're, we're getting to that right sizing. We're taking out sections, we're, you know, minimizing that staff where we need to, to leverage and right-sizeing that, please. But we would look at the ESC and ROLFs, which is next door. That's an early learning, kids stop there for that early learning journey and then they're right back out. So how do we look at what these programs need and what space do we have available? So it's all around using efficient and effective space and capitalizing that on our, in our schools. So those are those pieces. When we get to the community conversations part, we'll have updates on all of those for the community to learn kind of what those updates have been and that they can really give some input and ideas so that we can plan kind of a really, kind of a plan with milestones and what's short-term and what's long-term because that needs to happen. So I know, like I said, this team had the benefit of getting to hear my experiences with that and how to, how to untangle that work. But just so we know, I, I do have that one under my belt a little bit, but we'll move through that. And I always move through it really laying out all the options, showing people what can be explored, what should be discounted, but what should really be looked at so that everyone can give voice to, to what they're thinking and what they want to see for, for their schools. So just an update around that work. It was Columns Scholarship Week. Thank you. I saw some of these faces there. Our seniors are finishing up interviews for scholarships. So just once again, thank you to Columns. It's an amazing organization, unique to West Bend. Last year, 142 seniors earned scholarships for four and two-year colleges, universities, as well as technical schools, and that total amount awarded was over $800,000. So just again, thank you to Columns for their partnership. I know I met them at 7:15 in the morning when they were arriving at the high school getting ready. Kids were walking around in suits and nervous and, but they go through a, a really nice interview process as part of that work. And then in spring, we'll have a celebration and do an awards night. So again, thank you to Columns and good luck to our students. West Bend Rock and Jazz Fest is a unique opportunity to see band students from Silverbrook, Badger, and the high schools. So Thursday evening at the Sixth Annual West Bend Rock and Jazz Fest at 6:30 PM. That'll be at the Silver Lining Arts Center. So this is a free event. Donations are recommended and welcome. And they'll also have the Mr. Lucky Syndicate as a guest band. So feel free to join us this week. We talked about behavior a little bit as we focus on our individual school reports, but I said I'd kind of keep that as a standing item. We've had staff members writing on six routes daily since last, the late February. We'll continue that post-spring break. We'll continue to analyze numbers since they started writing through Friday, March 8th. We asked for a data poll. There were 13 referrals for discipline, just not meeting the expectations of the bus. Certainly there were discipline measures for those referrals. Another action that we talked about last time that we weren't clear on the stats on, we asked for them to start tracking that in a way for us, that drivers could pull over and stop a bus. They need to focus on driving. When you become a distraction to them, they're going to stop and pull over. So four times they had done that. And again, that results in referrals as well. So we'll just keep that as an ongoing piece. Another piece for follow-up, we talked about working with Right Way now that they've kind of got in and assessed the system, that they're going to analyze the routes. We talked about the opportunity with the calendar with aligning the elementary times, what opportunity might be there. And then we talked about the, the time of all elementaries and some of the whys. So Assistant Superintendent Andy Sarno has reached out to Go Right Way, talking about that, to explore that, see what opportunities might be there. And we'll bring that forward as we have updates on that work. Thank you to the local Optimist Club. I was able to serve as a guest judge for their oratorical contest. I would like to congratulate first-place winner Keegan Cain, so junior at West. Second place was Alexandria Hanrahan of East. She's a freshman. Their topic was staying optimistic in challenging times. They will both advance to regional competition. So great. That's open to multiple communities. So to have both of them advancing from West Bend is also something we're proud of. So we wish them well. We also had West Bend East Junior Severin Hilt recently won the state boys' three-point shooting challenge. That was part of the WIA Boys State Basketball Tournament. He was chosen for the competition based on his three-point shooting numbers during the season, and clearly they were solid. So congratulations to him. Our students placed second in culinary competition. So that's the team of our high school culinary students. It's called the Pro Start Competition. So I know Tim's got a few more updates around the culinary arts, but you can see that work pays off. Our Sally Hoyer leads that program as their teacher. They were judged by food service industry professionals as well as college educators and given points on teamwork, presentation, cooking procedures, knife skills, and sanitation. And they placed second in that state competition. So again, the investment in the opportunity and you can see their performance is, is clearly a standout in the state. So congratulations. That team was Laura Chavez, Preston Duhome, Maddie Fell, Jack Steele, and Alex Zimmer. So congratulations to those students. And last week marked Charitable Giving Week at our high schools. So organizers are still kind of looking at those totals, but they, and I think it was highlighted in the, the local paper. So they had a charitable week last week where they highlight different charitable organizations. So both East and West, more than 800 kids attended a dance Saturday evening. Just a congratulations to the student council. They, they do fun spirit days each day of the week. They also highlight a charitable organization in the community and then they sponsor, kind of one of them gets kind of the large donation and then they divvy up their, their collections over the week. One of their creative days, I was on campus and it was Anything But a Backpack, where they had to carry their books in Anything But a Backpack. And it was hilarious to see the creativity. There were kayaks coming down the hall. There was, you know, a full locker on a dolly. They were just a hoot. But some of my favorites, someone brought their younger sibling to come carry around their books for them that morning. So, but they were just really clever and you could see the kids getting into it, but also building awareness and building service for the community to give back. So thank you to everyone for having some fun and doing some great work. I also got to brag on our students at the Greater Jackson Business Alliance. So we meet monthly. And at this last meeting, instead of a focus speaker, everyone kind of, we said, gave their elevator pitch around who their organization was and what they do. And I really tailored mine, kind of went about halfway through and talked about our high school students, even our middle school students, and our, our opportunity to partner in the community. So whether they're helping to expand a student's horizons by becoming aware of a job or a pathway or, or something that someone does in their community, or taking on a student for a youth apprenticeship or hiring our kids, really expanding their knowledge around all those different pathways. We have students that we hire here in IT that have IT skills, that have business skills, communication and marketing skills, that have the food service pieces, that have certainly our, our autos, our woodworking, all of those things. So it's just an amazing opportunity. So any business owners, connect with us. Like I said, it's, it's a unique opportunity. They were talking about the labor shortages and all of that. I'm like, I have, I have them for you. They're right here. So it was really, really nice. I know we've been recognizing our winter sports, but our spring sports are starting. So we've got baseball, softball, lacrosse, track and field, our Dolphins synchronized swim event. So again, things that set West Bend apart, having your own synchronized swim team, that's one. Trap shooting team, as well as boys' golf and tennis, girls' soccer. That team co-opted with East and West girls. They, their numbers were getting to the point where they, they weren't going to be able to run. So thankful to have them together and have a really strong team. In addition to those, Silverbrook has a full intramural program that's new. We touched on it a little bit when Mr. Rel was here. So intramural means they're competing in-house against each other with new opportunities. And then Badger has what we would call interscholastic, which is competition across other middle schools. So just a reminder to everyone to check out the calendar for some fun events, whether it's music programs or athletics, come out and, and cheer on the kids. We'd appreciate it. That's all I have. It's a rather long one tonight, but certainly lots going on.
Yeah, if I could mention one more.
Yeah, go for it.
But thank you for, just an extra comment. Kids getting involved in all those extracurricular activities at a young age hopefully helps with behavior here is just to add, add to the fishing club, there is a kids' free fishing clinic at Regner Park, April 9th, put on by the Kiwanis Early Risers. Fundraiser Nick Cole and Cole Manufacturing helped with fundraising for that where there was 500 kids last year. They're expecting more this year pending good weather. Kids can come out up to 15 years of age. They need to be accompanied by their parent. It's from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They give away free poles for those that win door prizes, not all the 500, but there's probably 50 to 100 poles. There's fishing equipment, so come out April 9th if you want your kids to learn fishing.
Thank you. I'll make sure and talk with the program advisors as well as they kind of get everyone ready for spring weather and catching different fish.
So I don't have a question, but I just want to go off of your charity week thing for the high schoolers. An unsolicited survey of high schoolers, they loved the Anything But a Backpack Day. The high schoolers that came and spoke to me about it said there were students helping students in the hallway of groups that maybe wouldn't interact together, helping pull a garbage can around, or the kayak situation up and down the stairs. They said it was just great, like camaraderie amongst students. And then they also talked about the teachers, how the teachers would rush out into the hallway to see what was happening in between classes. And I don't know, I just, kudos to the student council or whoever came up with this crazy idea. I'm sure it's some sort of social media trend I'm unaware of, but just cool stuff.
Other questions for Superintendent Wimmer? Thank you for the report.
Are you, are you making a motion that we should do that every day, Erin?
I told my kids to start thinking about if it appears next year, what are you bringing?
All right. We'll move then to the action items on our agenda and I think you'll see some familiar items on here as these are discussed in the prior meeting as discussion items. The first is Head Start Grant Refunding Application 2022 to 2023 and...
That's not Jamie. That would be Matt Durant. Jamie Palsum presented at the last meeting. So Matt and Jamie both work together, kind of different focus areas, but support our different early learning programs. So this was previously presented and discussed by Jamie. There's no new information. All these items have to be kind of segregated back out so that Head Start can keep it on file and verify that we've taken appropriate action. There's no new information, but Matt certainly has the expertise to answer any questions around the individual items should you need.
Thank you, Board and Superintendent Wimmer, for having me tonight. You stole all my thunder. But yes, as Superintendent Wimmer acknowledged, that these are four items for the Office of Head Start. We grouped them together as a discussion point because they are so interclosely related. But as far as voting goes, we will look at those separately. So I'll kind of give you a snippet of each of those documents and then I'll let you take it from there.
All right. Go ahead, please.
All right, so the first document that we're looking tonight is the Head Start Refunding Application. It is what the name implies. It's a long document that highlights our goals, our delivery, our program options, family and community engagement, and then finally our budget for the year.
Any questions on that first item?
Motion to approve the Head Start Refunding Application, including the designation funds for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second that motion. Motion second to approve the refunding application, including the designation funds for 2022-2023 school year. Any final discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
And Mr. Swigert votes yes. All right. No one passes. And the next one is the Head Start Grant COLA application, 2223.
Correct. COLA, cost of living adjustment. So this one, we are not sure about our COLA application yet. Again, as Jamie talked about, we believe it's going to be between 1.8 and 2%. And that COLA does not go away. Every year that COLA gets rolled and then becomes part of our basic. Any other questions or comments about that one?
I move to approve the allocation of the 2022-2023 Head Start Cost of Living Adjustment Grant Funding towards Head Start Staff Compensation. Is there a second? We'll give that one to Erin. Thank you, Erin. Motion second to approve the allocation of the COLA Adjustment to Head Start Staff Compensation. Final discussion. I'll call the roll. Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Dove. Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Mrs. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Justman. And Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We're on to the Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan, 2223.
Excellent. So we call this our TTA. Our TTA helps us as far as coaching because Head Start is kind of different than some of our other district programs. Our coaching helps support the annual strategic plan for our building.
Any questions? I move to approve the 2022-2023 Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Motion second to approve the Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan. Final discussion. Hearing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Justman. Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
And Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is the Head Start Grant Selection Criteria.
Correct. So we have 121 federally funded spots in our program and the selection criteria helps us fill those spots with the students that are in the most need.
Any questions on the Head Start Grant Selection Criteria?
Motion to approve the Washington County Head Start Grant Selection Criteria as presented.
I'll second. Motion second to approve the Washington County Head Start Grant Selection Criteria as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
Ms. Justman. Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
And Mrs. Swigert votes yes. Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
All right. That motion carries as well. I think we're through the Head Start items. Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. We'll move on then to the district calendar for 2022 through 2024. And Superintendent Wimmer will lead us through that conversation.
Yeah, so we foreshadowed quite a bit of this at our last discussion. We've talked about it, kind of what were those fence posts as the calendar committee took it on and did some planning. So we had laid in all those breaks. The only thing new to this is the professional days for staff. Our target was to place those on Mondays or Fridays so that they were an extension of family time. They were minimally disruptive. Sometimes you see calendars where they fall in a random middle of the Wednesday for school districts. So just with an emphasis on families. One of the things that Cameron talked about, I know he had to sneak out, but I was able to whisper before he went, that the freshman day that's noted as the 31st for freshman transition is marked on this calendar in the future year. What they need to do after they have that is do some surveying of students, staff, and families. It's not as natural in the next calendar. They'd have to find the week prior to school starting because we don't start until after Labor Day. So I just encourage them to get some feedback after that event. Everyone lived through it, so if there was any recommendation that we could add that to the calendar for freshmen as an activity and event. So we did have that discussion. The calendar is also built with enough instructional minutes to support some design efforts around high school exam schedules, so they would have that ability. In fact, it represents at least 20 hours more of instruction at every level for our students. Just coming in a little shy at elementary, it's about 19 extra hours of instruction, 21 at Silverbrook and Badger, and 20 for our high school as compared to previous year's calendars. And still in excess of kind of the target from the state in hours. So we'd have cushions should we have a snow day fall in there. We'd have that opportunity. Should something, I don't even want to say it out loud with knocking on some laminate here. You know, everyone remembers that bitter cold and we had that weird five days. We could certainly revisit that, but we'd look at flipping some professional days or things of that nature. But the calendar is certainly padded enough to support if there's inclement weather of any kind in that as well. Any questions?
Just two questions. So the high school freshman transition activity day on the 31st. Are you OK with state law on September 1 and starting? Can you just clarify that?
Yep, because it's an activity, so it's not part of their instructional minutes. It's not part of that. It's an activity. Certainly, maybe some families won't be available. But again, we'll try and target market. And it falls pretty naturally that it's the night before the regular school day in that calendar. But yes, because of the uniqueness that it's just a program day and not counted for the instructional minutes, it's just an extra.
And then can you just generally discuss the feedback that we received on the calendar? Opportunities for feedback? What did we receive?
Yeah, our families were happy around the consistency in the calendar, something that you can plan on the dates. So you know, having consistent spring break, you'll see that year after, you know, kind of Good Friday and Easter fall within it. So we had a little bit more flexibility, but they appreciate that kind of that knowing so that they can plan. So many families that we talked to kind of plan on traveling. And when you go and travel, you want to book the next year's stay kind of at the same time. So understanding, what's unique is we're putting out a two-year calendar. Some districts only put out a one-year calendar and do just one year at a time. So again, that piece for planning. And then again, keeping some natural pieces together, trying to leverage the breaks that make most sense for families. So when we're having to do professional pieces, it's making sense for families. It's supporting them in having kind of a longer time together versus, as I said, you see some districts do like a weird midweek Wednesday or many more structured early releases, and that just tends to not be family-friendly. And then the engagement with all staff, we're invited to participate in the committee, but we also then kept putting out feedback kind of each point along the way, including this kind of what they wanted to see for their professional development. And then, OK, this is what this is looking at. A next piece we're going to do actually with engagement and input is around conferences. Kind of, we know when target times would fall, in fall, right around that October window. But we've been having a lot of conversations, getting feedback from families and staff around conferences and the model and what works best. And then also the professional development time, being just as responsive to the adults in the organization. So we'll have another committee to talk about what to occur on those days instead of kind of directed and making sure there's rich opportunities. So this gives us all the days to do those things, but those are some next pieces. That'll just be update items, nothing you'd have to formally approve.
Other questions? Nancy?
For those current juniors at home who are dying to know, graduation then would be June 10?
They, Sunday is the graduation, so
11?
Yep, it's on the 22-23 calendar. It's Sunday, the 11th. And that following year, it's the 9th of June. So each Sunday. And then we'll figure out there's a particular who goes first if it's odd or even year.
So both on the same day, though?
Yes.
Yeah, OK.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would move to approve the district calendar for 2022 through 2024 school years as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the calendars for 2022 through 2024. Final discussion. Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
And Ms. Dove.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you, Superintendent Wimmer. We'll move on then to the next action item, which is the staffing plan, 2022 through 2023. And Mr. Lenny Hansen, the Director of HR, will walk us through the topic. Good evening.
Good evening. So we spent a good amount of time going through this last time. There is a document uploaded into Board Docs that is the staffing plan. It's 15 pages. It is generally the same thing that was presented last time. The one change is I talked last time about some of our processes for adapting to fluctuations in class size as they take place throughout the school year and how we this year have implemented a new process that lets us be very responsive mid-year. That was very necessary this year as we saw an unprecedented level of enrollments throughout the year, which caused more fluctuation than is typical. What I did in the final draft of this for today is I inserted some information about how that process actually works. So that's really the only change you're going to see. That I added both in a, on page five. I just added a section around one of the priorities, number six there being responsiveness. That was included within one of the other priority pieces. It was included in number two originally, which is on page three around class size. I just kind of fleshed that out a little bit more there. And then the actual process I laid out in more detail on page eight. Really what it does is it lays out five times throughout the year where we recheck where class sizes are either projecting to be if it's before the year started, or where they are in the middle of the year. And that lets us adapt as the school year goes on to see, OK, well, it's middle of the year. It's probably not going to be best case for us to add maybe a teacher and regroup those students. So then instead what we do is we add an entire, at least one, if not more, aides to that grade level if that occurs at a certain, at a certain school. So across the district, our class sizes are projected to remain within our historical norm ranges, just like we said in the past. However, we, you know, when we end up in situations where maybe it might be one student outside that norm range, rather than immediately committing to a substantial investment of an entire another teacher position, we watch that enrollment and then at least allocate additional paraprofessional time to support that. Obviously, cost becomes a factor that we have to monitor when class sizes fluctuate. And we don't want to overcommit too early in the process where we may see withdrawals a little bit down the road that bring it back within the range. So by taking this approach where we allocate both substitute time as well as additional paraprofessional time allows us to be fiscally responsible while also not ignoring the fact that larger classes require some additional supports. So aside from that, the report is basically what you saw last time. So this is brought forth for approval as a preliminary staffing plan. And we call it preliminary just because, like I said, this is responsive. We monitor enrollment on a monthly basis at the first through 12th grade levels. And then actually, the kindergarten and 4K enrollment is monitored actually on a, basically a weekly basis by the staff in those areas so that we can see how those numbers are sorting out. So we will continue to monitor, make adjustments as necessary. Kindergarten is always one of the more, you know, challenging things to predict at this point in the year. So that's why we monitor as we go. It's very possible we add an additional kindergarten teacher to the system as we see where those enrollments land and which buildings end up with higher numbers. But we feel very comfortable about the budgetary, you know, the ability to deliver a balanced budget with this plan, as well as our ability to do that even with some minor adjustments along the way.
Nancy?
Lenny, this is totally going off your memory, but you know, obviously last year you did something similar as far as some type of projections. How much were we off by with our kindergarten? Like, I feel like in the end, did we have to add another kindergarten section or am I getting my years confused?
We added a kindergarten section at Fair Park about middle of, late July, I believe it was. That date I got to think about. I might be a little bit off on that. When we hire that late in the season, we often hire on a one-year non-renewing contract rather than a normal recurring contract. That's pretty typical throughout the education field just because you're late in the season and that's a little bit more appropriate for a variety of factors. So we did add one at Fair Park where we thought we were going to have three, but ended up having four.
So I guess my point is it's pretty typical that kindergarten number is really, I mean, you're going off of.
It's very typical. We did see more fluctuation into late August last year. But again, last year we were seeing a lot of people making last-minute decisions about in-person, virtual. We don't expect as much of that this year. People have kind of settled in. You know, we have a very strong virtual program. It's much smaller than it was a year ago, as we all expected. But the individuals in there seem to be pretty happy with that environment. So I don't know that we'll see the dramatic inflow and outflow of there as we did last year.
Thank you.
So really just to recap, we're, if the Board approves this report, this, or this plan, I should say, this is really us, the Board approving a starting point, correct? Because there are opportunities to adjust this upwards, downwards.
There are opportunities to adjust this. You know, one of the fact, one of the big pieces that this plays a role in is our determination around the number of contracts to renew for the coming school year. So statutory requirements force us into a position where we need to make decisions on contracts, really in the month of April for certified staff, which is, you know, primarily teachers and as well as counselors, psychologists, interventionists, that sort of thing. So we use the staffing plan to make those determinations around how many contracts, and that's why it comes here in March, so that then the next month we can turn our attention to April. But as you said, it doesn't preclude us from making adjustments later on. But it's important at this timeline because of those contract renewal timelines.
And I think an important piece, too, not only do we adjust, but then any contract not already approved in continuation comes before the Board. You know, that's always a standing item in our consent agenda so that you're always reviewing those as well. And we'd speak to, you know, it would have that kind of piece on it. This is an added position.
Thank you. Other questions?
So Lenny, I appreciate the detail that's in here, stepping through, you know, not only instruction, but paraprofessionals and support and so forth, but jumping up to the high level. Can you just, what are we looking at with a reduction of, projected of 76 students? When this all rolls up in the instructional role, is there an FTE reduction of, what, about four people projected?
So that's where your simplest look is really to look at it on the per-level changes. So for example, page eight at the top does that on an elementary level. And then page nine looks at the intermediate and middle level. And then page 10 looks at the high school level. So because obviously, when you put all the students together K-12, there's quite a variance from piece to piece. So at the top of page eight, you would see that we currently project four fewer sections in elementary than we have for this year. I am happy to report that it appears we'll be able to accomplish all of those through attrition at the elementary level, resignations, retirements. So that's a positive. Then at the Silverbrook level, you can see we project a reduction of two total sections on page nine. Those are in the sixth grade level. We are also very optimistic about accomplishing that through attrition, which is positive news for us. Badger is looking at a flat number of sections. They're just kind of flip-flopping how many in seventh, how many in eighth. And then at high school, you can see, you know, we go through every section there, but you can kind of see a total. Now, in high school, we have lots of partial positions. They might be shared between the middle level and the high school level. We also have several people who work on just part-time contracts. So you know, maybe they're at an 80% this year and they're going to 85 next year or 75, if there's fluctuations that way. So that's where you see a lot more the decimal point numbers there on the high school piece. So that's probably the better way to look at it in terms of how that plays out.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary staffing plan as presented.
I'll second. Motion and second to approve the preliminary staffing plan as presented. Any final discussion?
As we go into, like you said, contract time in April, will we have an opportunity to hear how things are going as it relates to this plan? I don't know if that happens publicly or in closed session or not. But I like the way the plan stands now when we have the same number of psychologists, the same number of counselors, the same number of interventionists. If those numbers start dropping, I'd at least like to know about that and know why. I totally understand why we have to have 12 fewer classroom teachers just based on projections of enrollment. But if we're going to start cutting any types of programs or support, I'd like the opportunity to have another discussion about that.
Not only would you have that in staffing, but also through the budget process. So Andy, we'll talk about it a little bit more later on the agenda. But we certainly, it's our job to deliver a balanced budget. So while we're giving projections, you know, some districts might cause alarm and start slicing things, like you said, like programs. We came into it with budget kind of priorities. We talked about service. We talked about academic performance, those pieces. I know Lenny's got it in his staffing that was kind of the drivers, if you will. So all of that would come before, and these were priorities. So we're balancing around that. We don't have intentions of cutting those pieces.
Thank you.
So it gives some of those general priorities at the beginning again. And those student services type supports that you're citing are, you know, maintenance of those is discussed. You know, really, our, one of our big goals, and we talked about this in the first meeting we had a couple, maybe a month ago now, was really trying to preserve that team-based approach that we've established at each site to address the needs of students in that way. And that's why, where we talked about how, you know, we're so proud to have a psychologist at every school, counselor at every school, a family liaison at every school. And then as you go up in the levels, you know, those supports even increase around alternative education and things like that. The plan is focused on maintaining those teams at each site for next year. Really, the adjustments you're seeing are purely related to where enrollment justifies reductions in the homerooms or number of core sections because of that. Or, as I said, registration, right? So at the high school, we have some areas going down, but we also have some going up. You know, we talked last time quite a bit about our tech ed program adding an eighth teacher, which is really unprecedented anywhere that I know of in addition to the tech ed teacher that we have at Badger and maybe getting at the wood shop that, you know, Dave was asking you to fund. So, you know, as you go up in the secondary level, it's much more tied to where students are registering, right? What are the areas they want to get into? What are the skill sets that they want to develop? And that, you know, registration, where the kids go, it's supply and demand, right? So where the demand is, we will increase staff accordingly.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Other discussion? All right, we have a motion and second on the floor. I will therefore call the roll. Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
And Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you. I believe you're going to lead us through the next agenda item, which is lifeguard compensation market analysis, another topic we saw last time in discussion.
Yep, we discussed last time how, you know, inflationary pressure, as they're putting pressure on everybody in our community, also puts pressure on wages in both the private and public sector. Lifeguards is one area where we compete both in the public, with public entities as well as private entities. The competition for lifeguards has increased dramatically during the pandemic. Our lifeguards, as a reminder, provide service not just for our own programs and our own students, but a ton of community services. but a ton of community services, keep our pool open at night so the community is able to use it, all sorts of community programs, swim lessons, all those sorts of things. So as those inflationary pressures have affected wages in a variety of areas, lifeguard is one that is a key area that we need to be able to address because we are struggling to recruit and retain lifeguards right now. So the proposal was to increase from our current position, which is daytime lifeguards at 1350 and evening lifeguards at 950, and just bringing them all up to 15. We studied some of the regional competitors who employ lifeguards and found that to be the reasonable place to set those rates. We also talked about how lifeguards are paid for out of our community service funds. So any changes you make around lifeguard funding does not impact the educational program budget, but it comes out of that Fund 80 authority. And then we also talked about how, you know, the maximum cost implication projected on this was under $3,000, but it may end up being even less than that in a wash, because when we aren't able to find lifeguards, we end up paying pool workers or pool managers to do double duty and do pool manager time and then at a different time and do lifeguard time when it's needed. And those pool workers actually are paid at a higher rate. So we're actually kind of paying a premium when we aren't able to recruit lifeguards. So the hope would be that while the budgetary number is already very small, the hope would be that it's probably even smaller.
So when we provide pool access to, say, the rec department for swim lessons, that's still our lifeguard that's providing oversight there? Is that just kind of a flow-through on the compensation that we charge the city and then we in turn pay the lifeguard? So the $2,900 is net the school district cost?
So Mr. Sarno is going to be more of an expert on that piece than I am. But what I can tell you is this, because that Fund 80 is kind of a separate authority that's designed to benefit the entire community, you know, a lot of that cost is just absorbed there. But there are some fees and so forth that we do collect. I don't know if you want to speak, that provides some offset.
Yeah. What Mr. Hanson was sharing is accurate. So we have an agreement with the city. There's a policy that talks about how much we charge different groups, our Boy Scouts, the city. So there's various charges for those facilities inclusive of any applicable fees. However, since it is the city, it's all kind of the same pot in a sense. Those are built into what we're allowed.
So the $2,900 adjustment, net of the adjustment here is net for the school district use of those services, basically? Okay. Thank you.
Nancy, did you have a question?
I was going to make a motion to set lifeguard compensation at $15 per hour effective April 4th, 2022.
Second. Motion and second to set lifeguard compensation at $15 per hour, starting April 4th, 2022. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman? Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. And Ms. Dove? Thank you. That motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to school fees for 2022, 2023 school year. And Mr. Sarno, good to see you at the podium again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to share this. This was presented two weeks ago for discussion. This is something that has not been in front of the school district in some time. We wanted to make sure, I'm looking for... Forgive my delay. We have two attachments in the executive summary, the same information that was presented two weeks ago. This is something that hasn't been in front of you for a while. There has not been any changes since it's been in front of you. Only one very minor recommendation based on the procurement of the locks that both Silverbrook as well as Badger utilizes and the changes in the prices for those, which isn't a change. Silverbrook had been at $11, Badger had been charging $12. Able to procure those for that dollar amount without making or losing too much money. But as presented as well, there's a secondary document, which is a high school fee. Believe this is all-inclusive of any program, any supplementary purchases, inclusive of even some optional things where the schools felt a need to disclose the yearbooks and some of those other purchases that they'd like to bring forward for their families and students. Be happy to answer any questions if you had any.
Padlocks are kind of a one-time only. I mean, as long as you don't lose the lock over the summertime, you can use the same locks year after year after year.
Correct.
And the other thing, I have a son at Badger who's an athlete. The $65 fee is a one-time fee and he can play as many sports as he wants. He doesn't pay 65 bucks per sport. So just kind of clarify on a couple of those.
Thank you. And those padlocks are special. It's the same combination for both locks on the athletic as well as the locker side, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would move to accept the fees and purchases per the attached documents as proposed, effective 2022, 2023 school year.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Motion and second to accept the fees and purchases per the attached documents as proposed, effective 22, 23 school year. Final discussion?
Andy, I, at the beginning of school years, always hear people complain about the cost of buying a parking pass for the high school. Are we pretty competitive with local high schools on what people charge for parking?
We've done a study of that parking cost at the high school. We believe we're in the ballpark. I think there's some that may be a little bit higher than us, some that may be a little bit lower than us. And what I, and typically, some, a high school teacher will ask some students to do some type of positioning story and question that. And when I, a typical response, and I keep it, because generally I can kind of copy and paste, because I'll get about six or eight of them all at once. But when we start to think about the parking lot attendant, the plowing, the striping, all of those expenses related to that lot, which potentially may not be there if it weren't for that need, it's something that, it's not a moneymaker for the district when we look at the couple hundred parking permits that we sell every year. But we're in the ballpark.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
I didn't realize there was a teacher having kids write positioning papers. That's probably why I get the emails at the beginning of the year like that. So thanks for telling me that.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and second on the floor. Therefore, I will call the roll. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
No.
Ms. Dove? Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Justman? Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That passes six to one. Motion is accepted. Thank you. And let's see. Next, we have Family Consumer Science Culinary Resources. And Mr. Harder, Director of CTE, is going to walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm back. Last time, we talked a little bit about the culinary program and a product that we utilize currently as our curricular restarters, the ProStar curriculum. And so that piece, what that does for us is it give us a national certification process for our students. We've actually had ProStar in the district since 2008. So we have a longstanding piece with that. We also then have on top of that an ability for those students to earn a industry-recognized credential at the national level. And so this is probably one of the toughest credentials that we have. So we have about four to six kids who earn this every year. It requires students to pass two exams and they have to then have 400 documented work hours in a restaurant. Some of that can come onsite through our school restaurant here, but it can also be outside of that point. So we have numerous other students who will pass one of the two exams or, you know, meet the documented work hours or a combination of those three pieces to get there. But we do have that average of four to six who pass it every year. So in front of you, we're just asking for approval of the updated resources from ProStar so that we can continue to offer that certification piece here in the district.
Any questions? I move to approve the Family and Consumer Science Culinary Resources. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Erin. Motion and second to approve the Family and Consumer Science Culinary Resources. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Ongert?
Neat program. Yes.
Ms. Justman? Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Dove? Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
And Mr. Swigert votes yes. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next discussion, I'm sorry, action item is the Start College Now and Early College Credit Courses. And Laura Jackson, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, is here to walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening. I get to present on this topic twice a year to you and ask for your approval for our students to take courses in the Start College Now program, which is at our two-year universities. It allows students to take courses at our technical colleges and our early college credit, which is tied to Wisconsin four-year institutes and allows students to take college credits for, while they're still in high school, at one of our four-year institutes. You have before you two different lists of courses. They are the courses that students have requested to take in the fall. We have no requests for summer, and these are student requests for fall of '22. The deadline for students to apply is March 1, and so that's why we come to you so early. It's also why you see such lengthy lists for students, because if the courses don't run or they're full and the students don't get in, they want to be able to substitute a course that's part of their plan. And so they'll request more, but the whole program does limit them to a total of 18 credits earned during this. Do you have any questions about the course requests for students in the Start College Now two-year technical school program or the Early College Credit four-year program?
So I noticed that EMT is on that list. And we had talked about having EMT class offered through the high school as a joint venture with Kiwaskum? Okay. Is that for the following school year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, I would move to approve the Start College Now and Early College Credit Course Requests for Fall of 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ongert. Motion and second to approve the Start College Now and Early College Credit Course Requests for Fall of 2022. Final discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Ms. Justman? Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. And Ms. Dove? All right. Thank you. That motion is approved. All right. I have a sheet here. Lost my agenda. There we go. All right. And then the next item, Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee Formation Process. And Ms. Jackson will walk us through that as well.
Yes. So next week, I will, or next week, excuse me, on April 4th, at our next board meeting, I will come before you to ask that you approve an advisory committee to review the Human Growth and Development curriculum. At this time, community members, parents, staff have been encouraged to sign up for the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee. We've spoken about this a few times, and let's hone in tonight on the selection process. And before you, you have a sheet that describes the questions that people were asked on the survey. You've seen the survey at previous board meetings. And when the survey closes, the curriculum and the instruction department will verify that the individual, if they said they were a parent, that they do have students enrolled in the district, will verify addresses so that we are sure that they are a resident of the district or a parent of a student in the district. And some are staff members, so we'll verify that information for you. Then the board will review the reasons for people, why they're participating, and their relevant experience. So the process that you use to determine who actually goes on to the advisory committee and is appointed by the board to review the curriculum is not defined in statute, but we have this information out there about the committee membership. And so once those verifications have happened, if the number is larger than what we project... So we talked about having 15 to 20 people on the committee. And if we have 45 people who want to be on, the board would look at that and then, again, decide if they're going to narrow that to the 15 to 20, which is desired, or expand that number. The one criteria that, that no group can be larger than 25% or except for parents. And at this point in our list, as of early this morning, we, the most, that is the group that we had the most of is parents. So I'm confident we'll be able to make that 25% of the group or more being parents and no other group being less than. But that varies on the last few days of signup.
It reminds me, I was just looking at the documents. So the groups would be parents or guardians? Healthcare professional?
Correct.
Members of the clergy?
Correct.
Residents of the district?
Correct.
Staff members?
Yes.
Those are the, those are the five.
And the residents of the district is people who do not have children in the schools.
Okay. Nancy?
Could you just speak to what, what type of commitment this will be for the committee? How often are they meeting? What's the length of the meeting? Is there kind of outside homework to do or what?
So each meeting is about, is scheduled to go for two hours in length. There will be homework outside, not the first night, but then the other two nights in between. And we're looking at three total meetings. The agendas, I did not put into this, this agenda item, but previously that was part of our last agenda, our last time we talked about this as a board, the drafts of the agendas for each meeting. So they're specific, targeted, focused, and they'll be facilitated. So it should be able to be accomplished in those meeting times, but that does mean, and it stated, it states that on the application, that there will be homework in between.
Any other questions?
I can add a, just popping up that supplementary, just in case people are listening and want to apply for that. Those meeting dates are April 19th, April 26th, and May 3rd. Again, that would be the obligation for the committee dates. Certainly, we'd want people to participate at all times. Meeting time is 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. They'll meet in the high school media center. And again, those dates are April 19th, April 26th, and May 3rd.
Should there be a large number? There are different ways the board can consider narrowing that selection. And that could be from reviewing the criteria that is perhaps reasons for participating, relevant experience. But there's also the opportunity to select by lottery. So by determining that number in advance, and then when you have a group larger, pulling the name out of a bowl.
Just again to clarify, this, the motion you would be asking for is to approve this process.
If you agree with the process. If you don't feel like, for example, you want to take the lottery thing off, we can adjust that and we can solidify the process right before the meeting or as part of the meeting next time. So if this process is agreeable to you, I would ask that you solidify it.
With that, I would move to approve the process for the selection of the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee members. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Erin. Motion and second to approve the process for the selection of Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee members. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Swigert votes yes. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Dove? Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
No.
Ms. Justman? And Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Process is approved. All right. And let's see. That was our last action item. So we'll move on to the single discussion item that we have, which is school finance. Mr. Sarno is going to walk us through that.
Thank you again for your time this evening. I do have a handout in case anybody would like it. I have them at the back and they're kind of hidden off to the side, but if there's anything. The executive summary that I included in the board packet was about my fourth iteration because I kept revisiting it. And one of the big pieces that I was trying to capture is the passion, and you're going to hear that today, the passion that goes towards accountability and transparency and process in facilitation. Because what we're going to be talking about is that. to be talking about, which I've affectionately coined as Finance 101, it is, it is some interesting and important information for folks to have, but it's not even just about the passion, it's also about the execution. So the rigor that we go through, and the multiple times per year that we bring this information forward for your awareness, and continuing with that momentum, and having Mr. Hanson present staffing information that aligns with certain standards, and making sure that we're responsible to bring forward what the board has tasked us with, which is a balanced budget that utilizes to the best of our ability, are limited, because we're one of only a couple taxation entities that have revenue limits. I did find out tech colleges do as well, but making sure that then we're also responsible to the taxpayers that make up a large portion of our nearly $100 million budget. So I did want to point that out, excuse me. Oh, I'm, I'm okay. Yeah, thank you. So school districts in Wisconsin have revenue limits. We make the best of what we have. They've been in place since 1993. And this Finance 101 document tells a story. It's a progressive, a sequential story. And it's, it's, oh, thank you, Lenny. Let's, 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 let's begin that little bit of a story. Because I think it's important to make sure that we understand it in a respectful manner. School districts, we're going to be primarily talking about the funding of school districts, not necessarily the budgeting process. And we've touched on many of these different pieces throughout at least my three years, and I know even before that, with prior business administrators. So specifically, the funding, and yes, we still bring forward balanced budgets. A month ago, I was in front of you sharing a projected revenue shortfall of about $2.4 million. That will be addressed by the time that we have our annual meeting in September. In the October, final budget, final levy, final mill rate, that will all be solidified into a balanced budget. At any point, anybody has any questions, tap your nose, tug your ear, just turn your mic on and ask. This truly is meant to be an interactive, and Wasbo, my professional organization, they even have a board game. So this, this document is actually about the third or the fourth version that I've been a part of. So I hope that it's a living document. We can make sure that it meets the need of the board, the constituents, and our organization. We're going to be talking about revenue limit authority. So slide number two that we have. So revenue limit authority speaks about our revenue membership. So those are all the students that are of school age that are residing within our borders. Since 1993, the state has told us how much money, it's actually a part of the state statutes, it's discussed every biennial budget, how much money we have access to. So that's the dollar per pupil. There are times where there's some exemptions, or some recurring and non-recurring exemptions, where we're either able to hold on to some money for a little bit longer because of declining enrollment. Another one is an example that's non-recurring, our vouchers. We'll talk about that in just a little bit. But there's dollars that get added into that. But we literally take a three-year average of students multiplied by a dollar amount. We add in, or sometimes we even take away from those exemptions. That gives us our revenue limit authority. It's our, it's, it's a dollar amount that, that we have the ability, ability to capture. We're going to now, now use an example of this is on the next slide. We currently have, for the existing year, a three-year average, our membership of 6,211 students, FTE. Our revenue limit authority is $10,052. That's statutory. There's nothing to do about that, is what it is. We have one-time non-recurring exemptions of $4.5 million. That's related earlier, where I'd mentioned some, some expenses that are one-time. We have some ongoing recurring exemptions that are related generally to special education, where we have some students coming into our district from out of district, and we're allowed to roll those expenditures into our budget. So when we take 6,211, multiplied by $10,052, we add in $4.5 million, we add in another $33,000, our maximum revenue limit authority for the current year that we're in is $68.4 million.
Okay, I'm, do my, what was I supposed to do? I don't remember. Just going to interrupt. So you talk about our three-year average of, and I like, thank you for putting like real numbers in here, if this helps. So obviously, we've been talking about declining enrollment, so that number is going down. Then the grand total, total revenue limit authority, then that would be going down as well.
Correct, yeah. So declining enrollment, and that's actually built into that $4.5 million, kind of that, the non-recurring exemption, that third box up on top. Because we have declining enrollment, there's a dollar amount that the state, again, per statute that was written in, allows districts to hold on to money one year to bridge that declining enrollment. And so I actually did an analysis of that. And so we, we right-size our district, we look at class sizes, we, we do our staffing. But over the last five years, so inclusive of this year, and it's a big factor of why we have a projected deficit next year, which we will address, but over the last five years, we have approximately $7 million less because of declining enrollment. So even in the current year, we had $1.74 million, $1.75 million less because of declining enrollment. It sticks with us one year, and then it goes away. Also inclusive of that are some vouchers with the private schools. We'll get into that in just a little bit. But this is our total revenue limit authority.
So Andy, staying on this slide for a moment, the $10,052 per pupil, that's West Bend's number.
That's West Bend's number.
What's the state average?
The state average is a couple hundred dollars above and beyond that. So what the two contributing factors are, back in 1993, when they were put in place, school districts were asked to grab their 1992 expenditures. And again, the state controls the, the increase each and every year. And this is where I tried to explain it a couple weeks ago, and we talked about this topic. The only other time where districts are allowed any additional money is if they go through a referendum for operational purposes, which coincidentally, we did. Back in, I believe it was 2001, 2002, there's a $950,000 recurring, meaning in perpetuity, operational referendum that did pass.
Are we still doing that now?
Yes and no. One of the things that I didn't point out in my passionate intro is that we're considered a low-spending district. And because we're a low-spending district, we've been picked up the last couple of years. Because we're a low-spending, we fell into that, where we were allowed a little bit of additional money. And so what I could comfortably say is, that $950,000 is gone. It was there for a while. We did have authority to do that, but because we've been a conservative district, that, that floor, if you will, has picked us up, and it's made that a mountain all in void.
Okay. So if we go back to 1993, this number's established, good, better, indifferent, based on 1992.
Yep.
So West Bend, being conservative, we were frugal with our spending, and we got locked in at a rate. I'm assuming there are other districts that were not nearly as frugal, that were spending at a higher rate. Let's, let's leave it at that. For 30 years, they've had the benefit of that decision, correct?
Correct, yep. So our neighboring districts are about $200, $220, revenue limit, more authority than what we currently have. Our comparable average, which I used based on size, approximately 6,000 students, property values, some other numerics, they're about $350, $400 more, but that would have been progressive over the last 29 years.
And there are some districts out there in the $15,000, $16,000, $17,000 range.
That's correct.
And acknowledging that that means you've got a higher taxation revenue limit, combination of state funding, local, not that I want to get ahead, but imagine what we could do if we had 40% more funding. Just something to consider.
Great dialogue. That's why I wanted to come tonight. That's why I was excited about this opportunity. So when we start thinking about our revenue limited authority, and that's that $68.4 million, there's really two primary sources. And yes, we have football gate receipts on Friday night, or yes, we have some school fees that you just approved for next year. And yes, we do receive some federal funding, specifically targeting some programs and services for students. But generally speaking, our revenue limit equals our equalization aid, or our general state aid, plus our state, or, excuse me, our local levy, our property tax levy. The problem with that, and that's why I have the or here, is because we already calculated our revenue limit. The state has a formula, it's a three-tiered formula, and maybe that can be Finance 102, but they have a three-tiered formula that basically says, how property-rich or poor are you, per student, per FTE, and we will give you so much money. And they fund school districts at about a 60% rate. We're more property-rich than the state average. But really, when you say, here's your revenue limit, the state says, here's how much state aid you have, that we will be providing for you, it's really that property tax that's left over. There's very little that's a variable that's outside of the control of the district. So that's why I liked to switch around that equation just a little bit. It serves a purpose. So let's take a look at the real numbers. So we've got this, did you have a question, Joel? No, okay. $68.4 million of revenue limit authority. The state in the current year told us that we have access to, from the state, of approximately $30 million. What's left is the levy. So under the, within the revenue limit authority, and we do have the ability to levy additional dollars outside of the revenue, but within the revenue limit authority, the state has told us through this funding model that we can levy up to $38.4, almost $38.5 million to our maximum authority. Simple math. As I'd mentioned, so above and beyond the, and there's two numbers. It's actually the first number, which is our operational, so I have a matrix here, all the different areas that we do levy for. We have an operational of 30, almost 36 million, non-refundum debt. So that actually is added into that above number to total the 38 million. But that's where the board has the authority to enter into debt. We repay that from our operational dollars. We have referendum debt, which is where we go to the constituents, and if they approve entering into debt for construction, renovation, whatever that might be, we have an obligation to repay that. So we currently levy $8.8 million for our referendum-approved debt. Our capital projects, so that's the Fund 41 that we talk about, we need to make sure that we're maintaining our facilities, 1.6 million. And our community services fund. So those are those programs outside of the typical school day, inclusive of Silverbrooks Innermurals, and Badgers, Interscholastic, our school resource officers, anything outside of a typical school day. So our total levy for the current year, $47.58 million.
Okay, you mentioned vouchers earlier, and said we'd return to it. I don't see vouchers listed in here. Is that included in one of these numbers?
Yep. So it is, and all of this is public-facing information, so it was attached to tonight's agenda. It was also linked to the Business Services website. And what Ms. Kunkler has also done is we've been creating additional supplemental information on the Business Services website. That's one of the graphs that we have out, that's, that's public-facing, and you can see kind of an exponential growth for the last few years, starting to stabilize. But within that top line, the 35, almost $36 million, is, I think it's about $2.9 million a voucher, where we are expected to levy that dollar amount. That's money that we, we don't see. We do levy for it. It's budgeted on the revenue and the expenditure side, but it's passed directly to the schools that participate in that program. But that's a levy that the 100% taxpayer funded, approximately $3 million for the current year.
Just for clarification, on the prior, on the prior page, the operational property tax levy limit was $38,458 and change.
Yep.
So if we go to the next page, let me see, well, the total levy is 47, 58917. Can you reconcile that for our?
Yep. So the top line of the 30, 35, almost 36 million adds in with the 816,000, which is the second-line item, which adds in then with, and I have to admit, maybe we need to reorder this, but the capital projects, which is the second from the bottom, so three, those three-dollar amounts total up to the previous slide of the 38.5 million. So.
Yeah, I think I reconciled, yeah, made, made sense. I thought, I'm eyeballing it and seeing what adds up to it, but I think that would be good to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some graphical representations of information. So one of the large dollar amounts that we spoke about, in going back to 2015, 16, our state aid. So we'd been bouncing around just a little bit. Some of this is dependent on what's happening across the state, spending in other districts, again, because there's a defined dollar amount by the state legislature on an annual basis. It's a sum sufficient, sum sufficient, I believe it's a sum sufficient, dollar amount that they distribute this out. We have seen over the last couple of years, a decline in our general state aid. Declining enrollment and increasing property values faster than the state average, this is where the state has told us, you have the ability to raise the funds at the local level, we're going to be giving you less. When we take a look at our enrollment, so these are not the membership before, but our actual enrollment. Who are we educating? Who's in our classes right now? For the current year, historically speaking, we've had declining enrollment for the last several years. We see that pocket of students, it's going through Silverbrook right now. We're projecting that out, as Superintendent Wimmer indicated. We're taking a look at the, our retention rate. What does that future look like, with any growth in our communities, engaging the Applied Population Lab at the UW-Madison, making sure that we understand what that looks like. We do see the blip from last year, we rebounded, but that is a heck of a trend line that's occurring when we take a look at that number.
And Andy, speaking of the, the population lab, so this anomaly that we're seeing again is, is not unique to West Bend, correct?
Correct.
The whole state is seeing a decline in school-age children?
There, there are growth areas that, that are happening.
Sure.
But this, this is not unique to us, though.
At the macro level, the whole state, though, is down.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Next is our property valuation. We're nearing $6 billion. That, that's been growing, as I indicated, faster than the state average. It's almost $1 billion within the last couple of years. And again, important factor, because between declining enrollment, fast-growing property values, that's the calculation with that state aid. Important to understand that. So very, fairly inverse correlation, then, because of the declining state aid, is the remaining factor, which is our property tax levy, which has indeed grown each in the, each of the last several years. Not in the current year or next year, but prior to that, as I indicated, there's the price floor. We're allowed access to about a 3% increase, 3.1% increase each of the last two years. So even though we had declining enrollment, and there's dollars going away, we are allowed authority to have new dollars. But for the current and next year, as part of the state biennial budget, no new dollars within the revenue limit. But when we take a look at this, because this, again, that state aid going down, property tax levy increasing. The second contributing factor is that when we take a look back at the 2019 referendum, we have been defezing, and defezing is the formal process. It'll be coming forward to you in a very, in, I believe, at the next two board meetings. But we've been levying dollars, being responsive to that outstanding principle and interest, and being responsible, and taking care of that. We'll talk about the taxation rate next, but the levy has been increasing, though. So let's talk about the taxation rate, or what we commonly call the mill rate. It's every, again, $6 billion, we commonly talk about every thousand dollars of value, whether it's a empty parcel of land, a business, a home. But we take that, and you can do the math, and I'll, actually, I forgot that we have that right in here, but we that right in here, but we take the total tax levy, we divide that by the total, the $6 billion of equalized property value, and that gives, and we multiply it by 1,000. Again, we talk about it in terms of thousands of dollars of value, and that gives us a mill rate or a taxation percentage. So we take a look at our total levy, which is $47.58 million for the current year, just shy of $6 billion, multiplied by 1,000 gives us a mill rate or a taxation rate of $7.97 for every thousand dollars on average across all values of land. We had been higher, again, this graph, and we felt it was important to go back several years, but we had been at $8.76, $8.65. It dropped down to $8.15. And since then, we've been able to hold the percentage for our mill rate flat at $7.97 for the current year and three prior. We've been able to address some long-term debt. And we're addressing the decrease in our general state aid.
So if I stop here and ask you a question on our mill rate, maybe I brought this up last time, but doing a little bit more history, our mill rate, as you can see, is $9, $7.97, well, $8. Just doing research and just confirm this, the average mill rate in Wisconsin is between about $9.40, $9.40, and $9 has fluctuated in that roughly $9.50 range over the last couple of years, since you're doing those numbers. And just doing some further research, you can pick out some high-spending-per-pupil districts. I'm glad Paul brought that up, that there are districts spending 13, 14, 15,000 per student. We're spending 10. And just doing some further research for Joe and Jill taxpayer, I called my neighbor that I grew up in Greendale and just looked at his mill rate at $11 plus. So boils down to, if I lived in Greendale, I'd be paying 1,000 more dollars in taxes for a similar-sized home. And just trying to put things in perspective, I'm, I'm a fiscal conservative, so I always ask these questions. So I just want to point it out to Joe, Jill, Kurt taxpayer here that we are a very low-spending district. And yes, we have, I voted for these mill rates myself, but as you said, a lot of the extra taxation from property taxes, we've saved for payment off of long-term debt. If I said anything wrong here, I think there's about 9 million in long-term debt that has been saved up over the last four or five years that we're waiting to pay down, what are $25 million in debt that is currently outstanding. So I just want to put that in perspective if there's taxpayer-ish questions compared to, how are we doing compared to living in another community in the state?
I think I would add to, you know, just a thank you to Mr. Sarno for his work and diligence in kind of trying to create a presentation. We've certainly seen and understand how budgets are built, but I think he's getting some questions from community and trying to build information that's accessible on the website to understand the complexity. So being responsive, putting things out there to understand how school funding works. And I think also, it gives that assurance to our community, you know, our, our community expects us to be solid fiscal stewards of their dollars. So we work within the parameters. Another piece, when we talked last time about projecting a deficit budget, and you know, you'd, you'd hear that, like, oh, time to tighten up the belt and, and do that. And, and we do do that work every year. So this is a team that then has to take all the formulas and all that complexity and then deliver that balanced budget. So making sure we're really transparent with our community to try and build their understanding, because we had some people express interest in that. So I just appreciate you kind of trying to narrow down a pretty big topic for everyone.
Thank you.
This isn't really a question, it's more of a statement, or perhaps you can answer it, or maybe Superintendent Wimmer can answer it. So obviously, we look at the funding, I understand that, but can we talk about the property valuation? And who is that actually set by? And, and how does that work? And perhaps some of the presentation could be a joint presentation, because I'm thinking that's set by the county, am I right? Or is that by the city?
A little bit. A little bit of everyone else.
Right, like, we, as a school district, do not set that my home is valued at $4 versus your home is valued at $8. Let's assume there's some zeros behind that, but yeah.
So primarily handled at the municipal level, they will do reassessments. So that, that is handled on a, on a sometimes strategic basis. Once they fall outside of, and they try to equalize all of that, they fall, when, when a municipality falls outside of a certain window, whether it's high or low, and generally it's low, they'll do a reassessment. And so that's handled at the municipal level, all independent of the school district, all reported to the county, all fed up to the Department of Revenue at the state side.
So for instance, if I live in the city of West Bend, the city comes in and says, hey, we decided your house is worth an extra $100,000, correct? And they have the authority to do that at any given time. I, as a taxpayer, have the opportunity to go and argue that a smidge and say, but I didn't really do anything to my house to have such a high valuation. So why don't you come back and reassess it? And then they can laugh and say, too bad, we do think it's worth that. And, and I'm stuck paying the tax. So that would be the same for, the Village of Jackson has that same authority, the town of West Bend. So it's not just the city, I'm not just trying to poke at the city, I'm just pointing out, you know, it's, it's any municipality, as you so pointed out. So this is really a two-pronged situation. While we look at, you know, the number as far as, you know, what we're looking at, but, but the valuation is really a critical piece as well. So I just, I want everyone to understand there's two parts to all of this. You know, Kurt's comment that, yes, I'd be paying $1,000 more, but my house could also be valued at $250,000 more there. So it might really be a lot more than $1,000 that I'm paying. A house in West Bend, I'm assuming, is valued at less than one right in the smack dab city of Greenfield, sitting on a half-acre land. I'm just guessing, but you know, that's just a guess.
They, they do try to equalize that, so that's one of the variables that's included. And again, you know, if there was an empty 40 parcel here in, in the Village of Jackson compared to a 40-acre parcel that was up in Hayward, they try to equalize that value. But yes, we need to be.
But come on, we all know that's, that, you can put that in quotes. If, if you've got 40 acres in West Bend versus Hayward, there's a whole different valuation happening there, so.
Exactly.
But I think that's one of the things, trying to explain the complexity of, you know, things that are, aren't under our control, whether it's the formula, whether it's that valuation, what we can execute on. There's been efforts in the state multiple times, bipartisan efforts, to kind of analyze that formula, look at those things. You know, there's some stagnant reports from a Blue Ribbon Commission that was done in, as, to your point, you know, how do we advocate things that help us support our community and our taxpayers and, and be responsible, but also do what we need to do. So it's, it's interesting, and, and I know Andy and, and business managers look at those things, so do we as superintendents, but it's been interesting efforts at all different levels, to your point, Nancy, whether it's the state, municipalities, and their assessments and advocacy, so.
But I mean, as you're trying to put together a presentation or even a piece on your website, I think it would be critical to sit down with the city to really come up with, you know, be probably beneficial, and I'll apologize if this is already on their website, but they might benefit from the same information being on their website. So that I, as, you know, John Q. Citizen can come in and, and understand, how is my property valued? And when can that legally change? And how is that legally changed? Because I think that's a critical piece. You know, everyone wants to say, well, the school district's getting more money. That's, that's true, but we don't value the property. So I, I do think that's a critical piece that should be added. And, you know, if you want to bring in the city and do a joint presentation, that'd be fabulous.
A lot of times, to your point, when, you know, it usually comes up when you get your tax bill, right? And how to work with the, the city on what kind of mailing they put together and build that understanding. But again, we're trying to really push out information so people understand, you know, those who are interested and get that. We put this in the district newsletter, which all the community has access to, to check out some of those things. So let us know what questions, let us know what's confusing. Give us feedback on those, because we want to provide information that's valuable to help you understand if you would like to dig in a little bit deeper or just even that kind of 5,000-foot view. So this is, this is for our community. So let us know if this is meeting the mark, or don't be afraid to contact Andy Sarno or myself to, to give us some more feedback.
I think one of the other data points that's interesting, as I've been working through my own analysis on this, you know, obviously, state aid is declining because of declining enrollment and increased property value. But buried inside that statement is the implication that the state is pushing a higher percentage onto West Bend. You said, Andy, 60% on average across the state. I think if you take the, the 29, 950, that is state funding this year, that's about 43% of the total.
Correct.
And, and there's been, over the last five years, there's been about a 4% shift reduction on the state side in terms of the, the overall share. So not only are they saying, yeah, your revenue's coming, or your, your enrollment's coming down, so you don't need as much, but your property value is going up, I'm not going to give you as much percentage-wise as I did last year. And maybe that's, that's a subtle nuance, but, you know, they got us coming and going.
So next steps, sounds like you're maybe tweaking this. What, what can, what can we expect next?
I will work with Ms. Kunkler, make sure that that gets updated, particular to the slide with the matrix of all the breakout of the different levies, make sure that's accurately reflected. This is not an action item where we'd be coming forward on April 4th. But again, want to make sure that it is something that everybody understands, that we have a mutual respect for the information and what we can do with it. It's something that's incorporated through our long range, a five-year projection. So we're taking a look at that, not just in what next year looks like, but bringing that forward for a future projection. But, so no further action at this time, short of awareness, but I really do appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. All right, move on to future agenda items, our board meeting calendar. And so our future meetings include the Curriculum Committee meeting, March 23. On April 4th, we have a regular board meeting, also a regular board meeting on April 18th and May 9th. And all of those meetings are planned currently to take place at the Education Service Center. Any questions on the calendar? Any items for follow-up and communication? All right. Hearing none, we have an item appropriate for discussion in executive session. And so I'm going to move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute's 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, evaluation and compensation. Will there be a second?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Final discussion. All right, I will call the roll. Ms. Ongert?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Repholz?
Yes.
And Mr. Swigertfoltz, yes. All right, thank you. We stand adjourned into executive session. Appreciate all those who attended and, and viewed this meeting. Have a good evening.
Hi.
Tell her I'll, she's gonna go.
I don't know.